Outside El Salvador. Thank you very much.
That concludes our speakers, council. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. If we could have Mr. Weezer add, please.
Thank you. Well, first I want to thank Mr. Reyes for once again having the council and the city pay tribute to a great man such as Monsignor Oscar Romero and the work he did to bring a voice to those people who needed a voice and pay more attention to social justice, human rights. And about a year ago, I went down to El Salvador with Carlos Vacarano and others who held dedication, my chief of staff Ana Cubas, who is of Salvadoran descent. And we went there as international observers for an election that was going to happen for the presidency. And President Funes, who eventually won, the more I saw and heard about this individual, although we were there as objective observers at the end of the day, I was really happy that he won because I do think he will bring to light the need to pay attention to all Salvadoranians and not only the most rich and powerful. And his action to finally apologize for the role that the government had in the assassination of Oscar Romero is a great... It shows that he is certainly delivering on what he promised. It's very significant for what he did because people have been in denial about what role, if any, the government had. And if you look at the history of El Salvador, the assassination of Monsignor Oscar Romero is perhaps one of the most significant. And to deny and even put at the forefront one of the most important parts of a country's history is not the way it should be. So I give a lot of applause, a lot of kudos to President Funes. And I hope that this is one of many others that the president will do to continue to move towards a path of social justice and human rights for all Salvadoranians. Thank you once again, Mr. Reyes, and I love you for being here today.
It is my honor to provide this resolution in tribute of the life of Monsignor Oscar E. Romero, celebrating his 30th anniversary. Now, I want to read a few words because it captures and echoes what Councilman Weezer has just stated. Whereas federal Judge Wagner determined that the murder constitute a crime against humanity because it was part of a widespread and systematic attack against the civilian population and concluded that what happened to Archbishop Romero was the antithesis of due process. And whereas in 1993, a U.N. truth commission on El Salvador found that there was full evidence of who participated in the crime and named those involved in assassination, Monsignor Oscar Anurfo E. Romero. And whereas despite existing evidence, the Salvadoran judicial system has yet to identify and bring to justice the material and then intellectual authors in the assassination of Archbishop Romero. Therefore, be resolved that Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, city attorney, and city comptroller, in the spirit of sister-city relationship with the city of San Salvador, hereby urge the government, the legislative assembly, and Supreme Court of El Salvador to bring to justice those responsible for the assassination of the Archbishop of San Salvador, Monsignor Oscar E. Romero. Signed by our council members, our city attorney, our city comptroller. Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Reyes, thank you. And let's remember the memory of this great Monsignor Romero. As we go to the next presentation, I'd like to call President Pro Tem Jad Perry.
Chair, I can do this from my desk. And I want to recognize Sharon Harris, who's come by today. We were celebrating the Pioneer Women Awards, but we're not today. But she's here, so I wanted to just introduce her. She is with a place called Home and founder of the Museet Program and has made arts an important life of the young people in South Los Angeles and has inspired them to find themselves through music. And I just wanted to tell everyone who's watching and listening, Sharon is an inspirational woman. I'm proud to have her working, inspiring other young people. And I just wanted to thank her for her indulgence today and to recognize her for her contributions.
Sarah, congratulations. Let's give her a big hand here. Recognition is there. Now, I'd like to call on Councilman Hope Weston. And also, at the same time, as I call on the great councilman of the 10th District, Mr. Weston, I want to call on the great councilman of the 5th District, Mr. Paul This may be a little challenge, but we will get it done. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. Today, Mr. Corretts and I, he has a program called Feline Friday. And I do a program that's called Adopt a Dog. And every now and then, we wind up trying to sell these dogs and cats together. Today is one of those days, except for Paul. This is the first time that there's been a cat that's been larger than the dog. So that's a first. But what I have today is a little two-month-old Chihuahua. They call him Hutch, but again, he's only two months, so you can change his name. A couple of weeks ago, I adopted a Chihuahua myself, named Twinkie. I changed her name to Cricket. And with my other two dogs that are larger, she is the best watchdog that I've ever had. So I've got this beautiful little Chihuahua that is in need of a home. And if you ever wanted a companion animal, I think this little guy is ready to go. He's got his shots. He has not been microchipped as of yet, so you'd have to get him microchipped. And if you're interested, please call 888-452-7381. And as you can see, he's pretty frisky. But, Mr. Corretts, we have a 100% adoption rate of our pets here at City Hall. And over 75 or 80% of these pets are adopted by individuals that are here in the chamber and by staff members that work in various city departments. So I'm going to ask anybody in these chambers, anybody watching this on television, to come on down because we're going to keep the little fellow here until somebody adopts him. I cannot adopt him because I have three dogs. If I adopt him, my wife will throw me out of the house. In fact, the last time, I didn't even tell her, Mr. Corretts.
Excuse me, I have a news bulletin from our city clerk. Hold on, please.
Oh, we have a taker?
We do. City clerk, you have a call from the city clerk's office? Patrice wants it? Patrice?
Okay.
She's on her way down, so we're good.
Patrice, you better hustle because I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of takers. Okay, now, with that said, Mr. Corretts, I sold my dog in three minutes. Can you top that?
I don't know, but I have a great cat here. Her name is Molly. She's a domestic mix. I think she looks like she might have a little Siamese in her. She's very curious. She's also kind of baffled by this dog. I don't think she's seen a dog before. She's a little older than a kitten. She's almost a year old. She's a great personality, a beautiful coat. And you can come down and get her. Or you can call my office at 213-473-7005. Her ID number is K10012891. And she is just gorgeous and sweet and very curious and very interested in everything that's going on. And so come on down and get her. She's...now's your chance. She's one of the cutest cats we've had so far. So thank you all for participating in Feline Friday and Adopt a Dog Friday. And everyone that's watching, either come down or call about these animals, but also you can call any of our six shelters. And we have so many wonderful cats and dogs and other animals there. So thank you so much.
And, Mr. President, or Madam President, I didn't mean to put Mr. Corretts on the spot. So come on now, I need somebody to come adopt this cat. All right, come on. Adopt the cat. We're going to get it. We're going to find somebody. We will find somebody. If I have to take the cat around... Maybe the people from Playa Vista will fight over which one will adopt the cat. Because I know that might be favorable to you and me. Anyway, thank you so much. Oh, Patrice, come here and get your baby. All right, let's give the new mom a round of applause. Is he darling or what? See, I know how to pick a dog.
I believe you have a presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It's always difficult going after Mr. Corretts and Mr. Weston with their giveaways. But colleagues in public, I'm very happy to be standing here today with a very important individual who not only does tremendous work in northeast Los Angeles, but does work for the city of Los Angeles and particularly for the Filipino community. I am talking about Awie Abayari, the executive of Tri Media Group. You see, Awie is not only significant in the work she does as a journalist, but it is through Awie that the Filipino community and the rest of us learn about the Filipino community experience, their challenges, and more importantly, their triumphs in a way that few can match. Awie Abayari was born in the Philippines and came to the United States to pursue her passion of broadcasting and community service. She has managed to pursue both those passions quite well. She arrived in Los Angeles more than 25 years ago, where she began hosting a Filipino-American radio station. It started as a modest two-to-four-hour program and has since grown to a 24-hours, seven-days-a-week operation. She is now the executive vice president of the highly-successful First Tri Media Group, which includes California Examiner, the largest Filipino-American newspaper in the United States, as well as World Reporter, another leading Filipino-American newspaper with a readership of more than 200,000 people. The company was established in 1987. It also includes the Filipino Yellow Pages, the San Diego Examiner, the Nevada Examiner, the Philippine American Convention and Exposition Incorporated, which is responsible for the longest-running and highly-successful expositions for the Filipino-American community. You can always find Awie at community events, such as the one we had where we celebrated outside of Council District 14 office in Eagle Rock last year to celebrate the great victory won by Filipino veterans and their families when, more than 60 years after they served our country honorably in World War II, they finally were given some financial restitution for their service and, more importantly, were treated like what they were deserved to be treated all along, like true veterans. While Awie was not only there taking photos and reporting, but she went out of her way to make sure that the veterans were comfortable, that they had what they needed, and that the families were there in comfort as well. It is that type of attention that we celebrate Awie because she is not only providing a great service to the Filipino-American community and to all of us, but she is also making sure that the northeast community and all of Filipino-American community is doing well with her special attention. We're joined today as well by Council General Mary Jo Bernardo Aragon, who is with us on many occasions to celebrate various issues with the Filipino-American community. But at this time, I would like to present Awie a special recognition and resolution from the city of Los Angeles thanking Awie for her tremendous work in journalism, her community activism, and her service to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Awie.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words and then...
Good morning. Thank you very much, Councilman Jose Weezer, for this very significant recognition. Congratulations to Councilman Weezer for the good work you're doing in Council District 14 and led also in your staff by Zenay Laura. I would like to thank God for planting the seed of service in my heart, my parents and my family for their unending love, and the First Tri Media Group of Companies, Mr. Oscar Hurnasyon, for giving me the opportunity to serve the community through print journalism, radio, and television, for allowing me to be creative and innovative, to conceptualize projects for the community, and giving me independence in all my decisions. With me today are very important people who are role models for the community. Council General Mary Jo Bernardo Aragon, who is a symbol of unity and strength and who is a constant reminder of the importance of heritage. Dr. Ross Pius and Evelyn Pius, true role models in the professional world. I thank you for your generosity and kindness and your gentleness in the spirit of Masonic love. And CJ, a young man who is inspiring a lot of the young people towards community service and is a very active community organizer for Bureau of Census Census 2010, encouraging all people to be counted April 1st as Census name. Congratulations. Once again, I'd like to thank Councilman Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much.
We have interviewed you various times on the radio station. We see that you have that sincerity and genuine concern and a true leader for District 14. So I thank you very much. I thank all of you and I wish you, Councilman Weezer, and all the members of the Los Angeles City Council and Mayor Antonio Villargosa, more power. May God bless you and may God bless the United States of America.
My name is Mary Jo Bernardo Aragon. I am the Philippine Council General in Los Angeles. And on behalf of the Philippine Council General in Los Angeles, I would like to thank the L.A. City Council and in particular, Councilman Weezer, for the honor and recognition that you have given to Ms. Awie Abayari, one of our most distinguished members of the Filipino-American media and the community for the wonderful service that she continues to provide to our community, Filipino-American community, and the community at large. Again, thank you very much for this great honor that you have given to her and to us here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And our next presentation is from Mr. Parks.
I'd like to ask several people to come up at this time because we're honoring a group that basically goes under the title Real Men Cook. And let me ask Dr. Fred Parrott to come up, Ted Brass, Ron Breinton, Kathy Powell, and Dipol Osini. Colleagues, we're recognizing this group for their close to 20 years of impact on the city of L.A. and surrounding areas and nationally. Real Men Cook Foundation was launched in 1990. It became the largest family celebration in the country. It presented annually on Father's Day. And as for 19 consecutive years, Father's Day 2009 celebrates the 20th anniversary in 10 leading cities that have reached out in the spirit beyond the city limits, even influencing and creating family services and celebrations. It has gone beyond the borders of the United States into the Bahamas, the continent of Africa, and London and Paris. The mission of the Real Men Cook Foundation for early detection of prostate cancer is to see that every man has the opportunity to say, quote, "I beat prostate cancer." His goal is to bring educational awareness about prostate cancer, erectile dysfunction, screening of high-risk men 45 years and older in the minority communities. Today, the Real Men Cook Foundation is the leading urban Father's Day experience. It's a food testing, family celebration, featuring men volunteering to cook for and serve the community. Ticket sales proceeds are enjoyed by partnering nonprofit organizations in 10 cities. Cooking is an example for what men are willing to do for their families and communities, giving up Father's Day, pampering to make a difference. Millions more share the experience through interactive news programming and media coverage and reaches over 136 million media audience impressions in 2002 and over 200 million last year. That's worth over $5 million in value in a single year. Real Men Cook caused the foundation to focus on not just the biological father, but men who've made a difference in the families and communities. Men and especially women alike appreciate and celebrate the concept. For grocery retail, Real Men Cook has opened up a new window for food purchasing and home cooking around Father's Day and put a meaning into Father's Day by turning it into an annual family tradition and celebration. Now in its 20th year, Real Men Cook includes average dads and father figures, leading celebrities, elected officials such as Eddie and Gerald Levert, also Mark Mariel, the former mayor of New Orleans, current president of the National Urban League, also have served as hosts for the Real Men Cook. Even Senator Barack Obama, now the president of the United States, was amongst thousands of men who have rolled up their sleeves, donned the Real Men Cook bandana, apron, or chef's hat to make a difference and change the way Father's Day is celebrated to benefit others. And I have to...you didn't put my name in there, but I'll say, I also cooked for two years and then the paramedics came. As a result of over $1 million in ticket sales proceeds and donations have been generated by Real Men Cook to nonprofit partners and organizations that serve families and communities. The Real Men Cook Foundation Center for Early Detection of Prostate Cancer will host a free confidential prostate cancer education and screening event next month, Saturday, April the 10th, in 2010. Today, by adoption of this resolution, the L.A. City Council declares April 10th in honor of the late Reverend Robert Kearns as Prostate Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to ask Dr. Parrott to come up at this time and make some comments. Please, everybody get up close. Take those visitors tags off. It messes up your picture.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Dr. Fred Parrott. I'm a retired physician and a prostate cancer survivor. For the past 16 years, USC Norris Cancer Center and the foundation has been providing education and screening for minority men all over the greater Los Angeles district. As of today, we have provided screening and education for over 50,000 medically undeserved minority men. We're not here today for this. We're here to honor the late Reverend Robert Kearns, former senior pastor of St. Bridget's Catholic Church, who died of prostate cancer in 2008 because of late detection of prostate cancer. Councilman Parks has named April 10th, 2010, in the name of the late Father Kearns. And on that day, we will have the late Father Kearns Prostate Cancer Education Free Confidential Prostate Cancer Screening and Education Event. And April 10th, 2010 will be known forever as the Late Father Kearns Prostate Cancer Education and Screening Event. And that will be located at St. Bridget's Hospital, 5244 South Western Avenue. Catholic Church. And for further information, you may call 233-233-294-7411. I'd like to introduce you to our Director of Operation, Mr. Kathy Powell, our Director of Events, Mr. Ted Brass, our Director of Education, Mr. Ron Breinton, and our Director of Operation, Mr. Dipol Osini. Thank you.
To the Real Men Cook in honor of this appropriate day, April 10th, the city council makes this resolution to dedicate that day, declare that day in honor of Father Kearns.
Yes, Mr. Ramon.
Parks, I want to congratulate you for this awareness, which is so important. You're always doing the right thing. I have seven brothers. Two of them had prostate cancer. We all get checked regularly. And to have early detection is the key. So to everybody, wherever you are, and it's very important. So I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Parks, and welcome the gentleman today at this council meeting in preparation for April 10th. Thank you.
Hi. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, for that informative presentation. Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Council may wish to call the roll.
All right.
Alec, Conklin, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Kokoyan, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 14 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Next order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Corretts seconds.
Madam President, do you wish to run through the agenda?
Yes.
Item one is a street vacation. The recommendation is to close the public hearing and instruct the city engineer to recede.
We'll open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next item.
Item two is an item notice for public hearing.
All right. I do believe we have a card on that item.
There are.
So we will hold that. Call that special.
Items 3 to 329 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue item 13 to Friday, April 9th, and item 28 to Wednesday, March 31st.
All right, we'll call three special and without objection, I believe, continuance is on the other two items?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Are we calling specials now?
Yes.
Three and 24, please.
Yes. 24 for Mr. Reyes. And then open the roll on the remaining items, please. Oh, 29 is special for Mr. Parks. Then go ahead and open the roll on the remaining items. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Three as well?
Yes, I called that one. Okay. Close the roll. Okay, Mr. Zine, 22 special. Members, any other specials before we open the roll on the remaining items? Okay, please.
Additional calendar? Item 60?
We're not there yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Next item.
Items 30 through 54 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And there are cards on items 30, 36. Actually, those are the only two.
All right, members, any specials? Any specials?
38.
38.
38 for Ms. Han.
All right, open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll.
The cards for 30, okay, we have those.
Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right.
Items 55...
Try a fourth with on 25, please.
25.
Mr. Parks?
Going to call 55? 55 can be held in open... Fifty-five can be held in open session because we've already approved it and a technicality had it returned to the council, and so it can go in open session.
And for the record on item fifty-five, there is a proposed settlement whereby Comcast agrees to pay seventy-five thousand in full settlement of the city's claim for unpaid franchise fees for the period of January first, two thousand and five, through July thirty-first, two thousand and six.
Thank you. Next item.
Do you wish to vote on that item?
Yes. Open the roll. I'm sorry. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Next item.
And item fifty-six is also a closed-session item, and there are cards on that.
We'll hold that on the desk.
Do you wish to return to public comment?
Yes. All right. We have a number of public com-- oh, Mr. Labange. I'm sorry, Mr. Labange.
Sixty.
We're not there yet. That's on the special agenda.
All right.
Okay. So when we recess this meeting and go to the special meeting, then you'll be able to call that one special.
Thank you.
Don't worry, I have something I need to call special on there, too.
It's very.
It's very special.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams and Joseph Lee, is Joseph Lee here? Okay, Mr. Lee, come on up. And Keith Quarles, are you here? Keith Quarles, come on up. And Arnold Sacks, she'll be after Keith Quarles.
Yes. Go ahead. Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-Five-Bert-Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. What's on the agenda today since DWP is on the special agenda? I can talk about DWP. What's going on in DWP? They had, over a year ago, a strategic plan proposed. Nothing has come of it. They held a second meeting. Nothing has come of it. Strategic plan for one of the largest, or if not the largest municipal utility district in the world, or at least in the United States. So if we have no strategic plan, what do we know about the goals, the objectives, the strategies, the policies of DWP? Nothing. I am a DWP liaison, and I can't tell my constituents what's going on because transparency and public participation are not there, even though we have an MOU that states that we're supposed to be notified and given ninety days to consider rate increases. And there will be some rate increases. But right now, all I'm focusing on, there's no strategic plan, they've spent a lot of money holding workshops on it, and nothing has come of it. We don't know where they're going, we don't know where they want to go, and we don't know how they want to get there. But I think that's shown by the fact that they don't want anybody to know what they're doing. They're bundling everything up so that nobody can see what's really going on within DWP. They need a strategic plan before they can have any more rate increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Lee.
Good morning, Council. I think they need a petition to send to the Border Patrol and the Immigration Service to check those persons who come across the border without their green cards and go out to the embassy and checking them out. Stop them from taking our jobs. They're not applying for the jobs the right way, just working for nothing. I'm also a veteran, and I'm also a U.S. citizen. I'm a citizen, but I'm in between a power fight, between the god and devil, or the god and god, or devil and devil. I have no power. That means they lose their power by the way. I didn't pay for my storage this month. I have the key to everybody's home and apartment and car. Why is they still driving? I'm not. I'm not staying no place, and I'm not driving. I just want to address that to the council. Thank you.
Mr. Keith Quarles and Arnold Sacks, is Mr. Sacks here? Mr. Sacks, is Keith Quarles here? Keith Quarles, are you here? Okay, Keith Quarles. Okay, we're going to go to Arnold Sacks, then. After Arnold Sacks is Alan Peschak.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. For all the people that are brand-new to the council chambers, pay close attention. One of the complaints we have when we come here to speak is that the council votes on items, but they're not sitting. And you might have seen some fourteen-zero votes, but you didn't see fourteen council members sitting. So not voting counts as a yes. Pay close attention to that. Now, back to council business. In Wednesday's meeting, how pretty animated it was when it came to the discussion regarding the layoffs in the media department. And what was fascinating was how you decided how you wanted to use the franchise fee that was created for the cable television. But there was a couple of things also fascinating. I appreciate Councilman Rosendahl's coming to the defense of the people that were laid off. My problem with it is, though, that why did it take so long? The franchise fee wasn't brand-new, so this fee that's been directed to the general funds didn't just happen. So why did it take so long to discover that this fee was being misappropriated? But then we heard from the Budget and Finance Committee, and they said, no, the fee wasn't being misappropriated at all. The council had decided that the franchise fee could go to general funds. So then the question is, why is the general fund allocating twenty percent of twenty-five million dollars to the cable division when the cable division is only not even spending ten percent and returning six million dollars to the general fund? Why not allocate ten percent? You know who does that kind of scam? That's a Nigerian scam where they send you a money order for more than what they buy, and they tell you to send the check back, and you out the check, you out the money order, and you out the cash. That's what that scam is all about.
Alan Peschak.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Alan Peschak. I work for Department of General Services. I'm paid out of the general fund. I spoke four weeks ago on our agreement under shared sacrifices. The sentence I read to you all has still not been followed up on. It says, "The mayor and the council shall ensure that all city employees contribute to the shared sacrifice at this time, and that all city entities contribute equitably." That's still not being done. More money is being channeled to other departments. If everybody started contributing, our jobs would not be on the line. I'm about to possibly be laid off because of misconduct in a lot of departments and possibly here. This has got to be made right. Thank you.
Keith Quarles, is Keith Quarles present? All right. Marcia Hanscom.
Honorable council members, Marcia Hanscom, I'm representing the Sierra Club and the Biona Institute. I'd like to draw your attention to a matter you may not have heard about. There's a newly discovered rare endangered wildflower population here in your city at the Biona Wetlands. And the Biona Institute and Sierra Club have asked the city attorney to direct your staff. Your staff in Public Works is trying to put a trail right through this wildflower population. They're trying to put a watering irrigation system, and this will actually help make this plant species go extinct. So I would like to ask you, I know you've had a lot of other issues you've been focusing on recently, but I would like to ask you to please direct the Public Works Department to work with the state of California, who is very upset right now that the city is not doing what they're supposed to do. And you're going to end up with a federal consent decree at some point if you don't. So, I mean, I keep hearing you want to be the greenest city in L.A., so please do something about this. Mr. Kukoyan, maybe you could help us. Thank you.
John Davis.
My name's John Davis. I'm a resident of Westchester. The EIR for Phase One of the Play Vista project is under a cloud of litigation regarding the potentially significant cumulative effects on the environment. Case number B-213967 is currently before the Court of Appeal. Until the court decides--
Sir, sir, excuse me, let me stop your time. That's an item that's actually on the agenda, so if you'd like to make another card for the agenda item itself and not speak during public comment, because public comments' purpose is to speak for items that are not on the agenda, items of general comment, other issues not on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. This is Phase One. You're mistakenly mixing that up with Phase Two, which is on the agenda. If I may finish my comment--
Let me check with the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney? Can I get an opinion on that?
If it's not on today's agenda, then he can speak. I don't know the specifics of Phase One, Phase Two, so I guess we could take him at his word.
I will have to take you at your word. Please proceed and start the clock.
Thank you, and my word is good. The EIR for Phase One is under a cloud of litigation regarding the potentially significant cumulative effects on the environment. Case number B-213967 is currently before the Court of Appeal. Until the court decides this case, it is an impossibility for this council to determine the significant effects on the environment of the project for Phase One under the banner of substantial evidence. This means that the cumulative effects are up in the air. It is only the Court of Appeals that will determine what those effects are, and it's not this council. The project proponent for Phase One of the Play Vista project is a common enemy of the state in that it has and continues to conduct irresponsible and wasteful extraction of waters in the state in clear violation of state water codes one-three-seven-five-one, one-oh-four, one-oh-five, one-three-seven-one-oh, and five-zero-zero-one. The California Water Code one-oh-two defines the groundwater at the site as waters of the state. Thank you. Please rescind the EIR for Phase One.
Thank you. Patricia McPherson.
My name is Patricia McPherson, president of Grassroots Coalition. I would again request that the city of L.A. enforce its Public Methane Task Force as approved in two thousand and four. This task force has not been enforced by the city council despite citizens' requests for its enforcement, as well as Councilman Rosendahl's periodic input regarding enforcement of the Public Methane Task Force. It would provide potential for full disclosure of the viability of the methane mitigation systems and enforcement of the mitigation monitoring of the methane safety systems in L.A., as well as Play Vista. For instance, the dewatering needs of the fifty-foot methane wells have not been determined, and the city has provided no proof that the wells can perform without dewatering. The appellate court, as cited earlier, has already noted this in its ruling, and it's still an issue of contention that the city dodges. However, there is evidence in the record that does reveal that the wells cannot perform without dewatering, including from the city's own DBS expert in the two thousand and four methane code hearing that the fifty-foot vent wells have clogged and filled with silt. Furthermore, gas migration experts wrote in his declaration, "In nineteen eighty-nine, there was a near repeat of the gas hazard conditions that caused the nineteen eighty-five explosion and fires. The city of L.A. discovered the Anthony Vent Well had become clogged by the infiltration of water and scale buildup in the perforations used at the base of the vent well, located at the depth of approximately fifty feet. The study of results identified the extreme criticality of not allowing the water table to rise above the vent pipe perforations located at the approximate depth of fifty feet. It was also found critical not to allow scale to build up to occur within the perforations at this depth, largely caused by microbial activity occurring with the water and gas bubble interface at this depth. The findings above and research confirm that de-gassing of the high-pressure gas pockets existing in the fifty-foot gravel at Play Vista on Phase One cannot be accomplished by way of drilling passive wells into these areas." Thank you very much.
Are you Scott? Are you Mr. Quarles?
No, I'm Mr. Cohen.
Okay. Mr. Cohen. Hold on a second.
Just public comment.
I don't have, I didn't call your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I don't have a card in here for you. Mr. Cohen, can you fill out a card and just give it to the sergeant-at-arms? And I'll call you up. You've got plenty of time. Scott Johnson? Scott Johnson here?
Yeah.
The speaker cards are in the back of the room, sir. And after Scott Johnson will be Michael, it looks like Michael Huntsman. Michael Huntsman?
Good morning, city council. My name's Scott Johnson. I'm a resident, CD fourteen, Boyle Heights. Speaking of public comments today about observations coming out of yesterday's meeting with the parks, the parks committee, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weston, Mr. Labange. Last evening, I had the opportunity to share some of my observations from that meeting with fellow recreation and parks employees, both part-time and full-time. And sadly, there is a concern and a feeling within our bodies of employees, whether we're recassistants or rectoractors, that basically it seems like we're just being left to weather in the wind, that our jobs are basically going to be sacrificed to other entities, connected nonprofits, who are already operating in, at least in my area. And it would almost feel like a sense of betrayal that after years, in my case, I've given, since nineteen eighty-five, I'm not since that time, dedication to recreational parks as a professional, and gone on to establish other modes of training and so forth, that in this process here, I would hope this body will take into consideration the dedication and the experience of people like myself and other employees from the department, because right now, after talking to the people I discussed last night, we feel like our management is basically leaving us, abandoning us, to protect the top end and to sacrifice the lower end, and then other organizations will infill once we are gone. And believe me, you're not going to get the same quality of service in return, and I can testify to that in future meetings. Thank you for your time.
Michael Huntsman? Is there Michael Huntsman? It's difficult to read. All right. Dovey Kurtoff? Doug Kurtoff, sorry.
It's Doug Kurtoff. I'm here to speak to the council. I understand how hard it is to listen to all these public comments, and I appreciate all that, but I'm here at this time to say something positive. I was looking at all the roofs of Los Angeles. Okay, I believe in electric cars and solar power, you know, to lead to energy independence. So I was looking at all the roofs of Los Angeles, and almost none of them have solar power. Now, DWP has done a pretty good job of putting some solar power onto roofs, but what we need is something more substantial. We need a city policy that all homes are self-sufficient in electric power, and that would be that all new homes and all remodels would be urged to do so. The suburbs with spoiled homes could be electricity generators. All it takes is a policy statement by the city. It doesn't cost a thing. It doesn't necessarily involve anything. It's just a different way of doing business. When architects look at new houses, they have to think about, where's the solar system going to go on the roof? When people do remodels of an expensive tile roof, they have to think, maybe it'd be cheaper to put in solar panels than to put in a tile roof. So I just ask you to think about, and I'll send you an email, too, think about putting a resolution that the city of Los Angeles is forthright and foursquare for being entirely self-sufficient in energy. And every home should export energy to the apartments that we can't put solar on apartments yet. So thanks very much.
Jose Aguilar? Jose Aguilar.
Thank you, city council. I went to the Energy Committee yesterday, and I provided testimony that the Eastern Group publication has taken an adverse position. In other words, the carbon tax would create huge economic detriment to the communities in the northeast and east. in the northeast and east. Furthermore, one of the main reasons that I oppose this, uh, carbon tax, and I wanted to make this very clear, there is no itemized, I'm going to repeat that word, itemized implementation plan for renewables. There is no itemized implementation plan for renewables. When you go to a bank and you say, "I want to start a coffee shop," they want an itemized, uh, uh, in other words, you need to produce an itemized list on how you're going to spend the bank's money before the bank gives hands over the check. Okay, it's called a business plan, all right? A bank is not going to give you a dime without a business plan. And what the mayor wants, he wants a blank check. He wants eight hundred million dollars upfront, and we are going to trust him to do the right thing? Hell, no. I want to hold the mayor up to a higher standard, and I- again, I'm a member of the MOU, uh, DWP Committee, and I want an itemized renewable implementation plan. Maybe I'm not ma- I gotta repeat it, because sometimes I wonder. Itemized renewable implementation plan. Do not give him a blank check. Once he produces an itemized renewable implementation plan, then we could hold a good-faith discussion. But until that itemized renewable implementation plan is in place, don't give the mayor a dime.
Mr. Matthew Dowd? Matthew Dowd? Is Mr. Matthew Dowd present?
Yes, I've just come up from LAX Courthouse with Michael Hunt, and, uh, boy, that's the quickest I've ever got out of a courtroom. Let me tell, uh, someone to tell Bill Rosendahl why, because there was a shirt involved. There was a shirt involved at the court today. The city is prosecuting Matt Dowd and Michael Hunt. And, uh, so yeah, we adjourned it, we continued it, because they wanted to get the T-shirt out of there. So, um, I hope it comes out on TV. I was looking at the Sister City sign here right outside yesterday. You know, and there's- we need two more signs up there, the Sister City of Corruption and the Sister City of Broke. And I want to know who's responsible for having to fire four thousand of the city employee family? Because Eric Gass said he's not here right now, is he? Where is he? Because his name's up here on the board, I don't see him. But he's meant to be driving the ship here, and he's driven it into ruin, and he's meant to be this Rhodes Scholar, the smart guy. And we were here telling him not to overdevelop this city, you're trying to do it here, let's hear if anyone would- wasn't to stop the developments! They don't sound very convincing yet, though, we'll get there, we'll get there. All right, one more time, let's stop these crazy developments! Okay, we're warming up. So yeah, someone's got to take responsibility for the massive budget crisis, and we told you it's from developing downtown, you had no infrastructure, there's no water, there wasn't the capacity, all the freeways are jammed, but you put billions of pension dollars into downtown real estate that's sitting empty in a- in the worst financial crisis that's only getting worse, so who's taking the blame?
Thank you. Mr. Michael Hunt, please.
No one.
Michael Hunt, please.
I'm for jobs, you guys! Yeah! Let's save the development! Jobs! If you want your jobs, let's save the developments. Hey, my ticket is right on jobs. If you're going to develop the city, eh, you're going to get a hundred thousand more jobs, or at least a hundred more jobs, I'm for you. Let's take all the bogusness out of courts, and let's save the city of Los Angeles. Let's kind of like fire the mayor and give these four thousand people their jobs back. You know, let's manage the city, let's tax marijuana in the oil shores and get two billion dollars' worth of revenue so these people can get their jobs back. I hope they got the same fight as I had when I had to go to the courts and win in federal court. Um, today, like Matt Dowd said, I was in court again for forty-two fifteen, and it was a shirt that got me out of there in ten seconds, and everybody know what that shirt says, so... But other than that, you know, I only make star appearances now. You guys need to fight for your jobs, if it's development, if it's going to cause the community some jobs, I'm for that. Um, I don't know what the wetlands are, you know, as far as creating more, uh, really development, I don't- I don't really understand that, but if it creates jobs, I understand that part of it. So let's create jobs, let's hi- rehire the four thousand dollars or the four thousand people up under the federal constitution or the stimulus package, let's reframe everything, let's put Los Angeles back to work. Thank you, my name is Michael Hunt.
Dan Cohen?
Yeah, my name's Daniel Cohen. I'd like to also comment about the water problem they're having at Playa Vista. They built Playa Vista Phase One in a state aquifer, they put the garages underwater, they're pumping out water that's polluted with oil field constituents, and they're dumping it in the sewer. Do they have permits from Department of Sanitation? No. Are they monitoring the quality or the quantity of the water they're dumping in the sewer? No. Where's all this polluted water going? Perhaps more than a million gallons of polluted water is flowing into our oceans every day. I beg for the city attorney to go and direct the Department of Sanitation to go and stop the illegal dumping of a million gallons of polluted water every day into our sewer system, which puts a strain on the hyperion system. This is nothing but a violation of our federal EPA laws. It's polluting our oceans, it's toxic, it's causing saltwater to intrude into the freshwater aquifer. This is a horrendous situation. The fines that these developers are looking at are probably twenty-five dollars a day per gallon going back five years. So whatever twenty-five million dollars a day is for five years, that's what they're looking at. The city attorney needs to direct the Department of Sanitation to shut off the illegal hookups of the dewatering systems underneath Playa Vista Phase One. Stop the polluting. We only have one ocean. I have to eat the fish out of that ocean, I have to sail in it, we swim in it, stop dumping polluted water in our sewer.
Frank Cheftel? Frank Cheftel? Mr. Frank Cheftel?
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. Um, I've been here a couple of times speaking about a small issue. People come here for big issues, and some people come here for small issues. Mine today is a small issue that I've been pushing in front of the council for a while, and that is help with the temple that my parents belonged to for the past fifty years and getting their parking lot paved. Um, they're in parking lot paving heck right now, they really don't know what to do, um, they've been held up by the city, uh, because of an issue, um, and right now, they have a hundred thousand dollars that are in an escrow account with the paver, and they're not allowed to pave the parking lot. This temple's been there for fifty years. It's a simple matter of just paving the parking lot. Uh, these are elderly people that belong to the temple, they're caught up in bureaucratic red tape because of certain issues that they say they need to bring up to code, which they should be grandfathered in, they're not doing any new construction, they're simply repaving their parking lot. The issue is, it's in Councilman Krikorian's district, it's also shared by Councilman Cardenas's district, somehow it splits down the middle, the way the temple is. So they've gone to the councilman's office, they've called your office, and they haven't gotten a response. Um, they're getting the red tape back and forth, and we'd really appreciate it if you could really do something about it, maybe get your people to return the phone calls, and to just simply help them in expediting the red tape that they need to get their parking lot paved, that's all they want to do. The holidays are coming up, the high holidays, and they'd like to get that done. And right now, it's going nowhere. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for a small family synagogue in the valley, it's Valley Beth Israel, so I'd really appreciate just, you know, a little attention to a small matter that would make a lot of people happy, these are constituents that vote, and, you know, the elections are coming up, and they're going to help and support somebody that's helped their small synagogue. So again, I please, you know, hope that you guys can do something about that, and, uh, I've been here now four, five times, you've heard me talk about this before.
Thank you. Leslie Purcell? Leslie Purcell? Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Um, I would like to speak about a couple things. Uh, as an item generally on development conditions, there is rodent abatement, and that is done usually with poisons that can be very harmful to other animals and wildlife. And I'd like the council to think about this. It is a condition that will come up later with one of the, uh, other agenda items. Uh, anticoagulant poisons, which are often used for rodents, cause them to bleed internally if they are caught by another raptor or any other predatory animal, including foxes, coyotes, bobcats, and in the Santa Monica Mountains, it was mountain lions, these animals can die as well. In the Biona Wetlands, we have great bluehorns, we have nesting red-tailed hawks, we have kites and other shorebirds and other raptors that could be at risk from poisoning such as this. In, uh, the Bolsochica Mesa, when the upland development was permitted, the Coastal Commission, for the first time, imposed a condition on that developer to not use these kinds of poisons, and also to include that as a condition for the homeowners, that they would not be poisoning the rodents in such a manner as to endanger the adjacent wildlife. Since we have critical wildlife in the Biona Wetlands and adjacent areas, I would ask the City Council to consider this, uh, as something to condition their permitting process on as well. I would also like to address that in, um, Phase One, it's questionable whether the wildlife crossings were ever instituted that were required for Lincoln Boulevard.
Thank you. Rick McCalka?
McCauley, my writing is bad, I apologize.
It is bad, thank you, go ahead, McCauley.
I should have been a doctor.
I'll vouch for that.
I should have been a doctor, people-
You should have been. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, uh, I wasn't prepared to speak this morning, so I'm going to be extremely brief. I was here, uh, with respect to the DWP issue and their proposed rate hikes. Um, I heard excerpts from the energy hearing yesterday, which sounded to me more like a Comedy Central skit. Um, how pe- how people can push the global warming issue continually despite the fact that there's been over six months of, um, of issues related to the data, uh, in that, you know, with related to this issue, and yet moving forward as if it's a done deal. I would also ask the council to please not, um, okay any rate hikes. We cannot, uh, let the DWP use us as an ATM machine, and to, uh, as I understand it, they have, um, operating profit of four hundred million a year, and somewhere around a billion dollars in the bank, if they need to make some infrastructure improvements for green energy, fine, do it with that money. And then I'd like to, just finally, before I go to work, I'd like to, um, ask, uh, if I could correct the record from the, um, the Energy Council meeting yesterday, the esteemed Vice President called the mayor Viorigosa, I believe it's Villaigosa, and the mayor referred to him as a Nobel Prize Peace winner, I believe it's Nobel. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public speaker, Robert Van De Hoek.
I can help you on the pronunciation.
Wait, it looks like Van De Hook.
You're very close that third time there, Van De Hook.
Dan Van De Hook, okay.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Give him his two minutes' worth.
I wish to speak to you about, uh, three things. I am an educator and a scientist, and I want to tell you about, uh, aspirin. It comes from a plant called the willow tree, and that's a native plant, so it provides a great economic benefit to the United States in medicine and helping us when we have pain and that, and it comes from a native plant, the willow. Second, the California poppy is beautiful, and, so it's aesthetic, and so it provides us great value, and our state of California, almost a hundred years ago, designated it our state flower. Third is the ecological statement about native plants. Native plants hold our soil, the redwood is a native plant, all our pine forests in California are native plants, and help stop erosion, provide us water into our reservoirs by holding the water back, and doing all kinds of other, what are called ecosystem benefits to us. Those are three Es: economic, aesthetic, and ecologic, uh, related to native plants, and a very important reason why we should cherish native plants and all of, um, the features they provide for us to the earth and to our society and to us as people. Uh, secondly, I teach, uh, children at West Side Leadership Magnet School. This is a school where eighty percent of the students are bused in from the inner city, and they go to school within a few blocks of the ocean and a wetland called Grand Canal adjacent to Venice Canals. Uh, yesterday with kindergartners, I talked about the soil as habitat, and almost immediately, a very intelligent five-year-old child said, "What about water? That's a habitat too." And then another child said, "Well, what about the sky? Isn't that a habitat?" So it's very interesting to see that in the future, with our younger kids, five-year-olds, that they're really beginning to, uh, get it already about the environment, native plants, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That completes our public comment period. Mr. Rosendahl, we're now going to go to number three. Mr. Rosendahl? We have, um, a stack of cards, I understand there was a public hearing. The pleasure of the council is to proceed or the public comment. Mr. Reyes?
Well, if we can give everyone one minute, um, with a cap of about fifteen minutes, we've had several public hearings, maybe divided equally? Fifteen minutes for each side?
Uh, it's going to be difficult to, uh, to divide, because it looks like it's all... Well, there's a couple for, majority of them are, uh, against, so...
Well, let's do fifteen minutes, then.
All right, so we'll start with Dr. Williams.
Uh, some of my background is, I was a gas specialist for RTD MTA for five years, I was with persons on the Wisher Court or Gas Monitoring System, and several others, also consultant to the CPUC regarding the gas storage facilities in Montebello and Playa del Rey. We recommend that they close them down. They are closing down Montebello, and both of them leak. Where does the gas come from? Where does it go? Okay, you can see methane at the surface. There was a proposed gas mitigation process for the Playa Vista number one. However, there's no documentation on it. Where is it? What is it done? How is it working? Is it working at all? So, uh, based upon that, the EIR is incomplete, inadequate, and insufficient to document the impacts, and the mitigation measures are inappropriate for the geology-
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on this is Tom Francis. Tom Francis?
It looks like Tom Francis. Are you here, sir?
He's here.
All right, where are you?
Can you move his card back?
We're not going to move his card back, we're going to call one time, there's too many cards to play that. Our next one will be Jonathan. Jonathan Coffin? Jonathan Coffin?
Uh, my name is Jonathan Coffin, I live in Inwood, uh, lived here for fifty years. Uh, I'm here to talk about the, uh, we have a six-hundred-acre ecological reserve, and, uh, a fragile ecosystem, and the Playa Vista Phase- Phase Two development is- is part of the Biona ecosystem, and the, I've- I've seen on a number of occasions the, uh, American Osprey visiting the site with fish, and all kinds of wildlife, and insects and frogs- kinds of wildlife and insects and frogs. And it's time, it's time to start considering how the whole, how our wildlife fits in to the Biona ecosystem that we have and to consider what we're doing with this development. It's like a giant ship that's out of control. We need to slow it down and consider the wildlife and where we fit into it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Douglas Reed. Douglas Reed? No Douglas Reed? David Warren? David Warren? Pardon me, sir?
I'm David Warren, and I yield my time.
There's no yielding time, sir? Lisa Bonet? Lisa Bonet? No Lisa Bonet? Jose Aguilar? Jose Aguilar? Are you Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa, I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Lisa Bonet. I'm a current resident of Playa del Rey, California, and I wanted to state that I am against the development of the Bono Wetlands. It's a beautiful area right now, the way that it is, and I don't think that we need to do anything else. If people need more homes, there are tons of places in Playa del Rey. We don't need to build any more homes. There are tons of vacancies there. My current apartment building is 20% vacancies right now, so people can move there. I think we should keep everything the way that it is, so.
Thank you, Jose Aguilar.
Yes, again, I support the Bono Wetlands. I'm opposed to the development due to the laws of supply and demand. What I mean by the laws of supply and demand is very simple. The more high-density mixed-use commercial development complexes that you produce in the city, the higher and higher and higher utility rates you incur upon the homeowners in the city. I am opposed to the development simply because it exacerbates the draconian rates that City Council is imposing upon the citizens of Los Angeles. Also, the water supply is being restricted due to the Endangered Species Act from the San Joaquin Valley, the aquifers. So we're not getting a proper water supply from the north. And again, this high-density mixed-use development product would again pressure us when it comes to water supply. Thank you.
James Garrett? James Garrett? Are you here, sir? There you are. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Garrett. I live in Mar Vista, and I'm against the project. Traffic in the, in the area is absolutely out of sight. To get from Santa Monica to Marina del Rey takes you an hour or sometimes, sometimes longer. It's just impossible to get to the stores. It's impossible to get back home. So I'm just against the project. I think that there's much, too much development in the area already.
Thank you, sir. Anthony Morales? Anthony Morales? Anthony Morales? No Anthony Morales in the chambers. Robert Roy Van de Hook?
Good morning. Since Anthony Morales isn't here, maybe he will speak again. He's a Native American leader and of the nation that represents this area. I am a cultural resources manager as well as a scientist, and I wish to speak briefly to the fact that the federal law Archaeological Resources Protection Act and all of its amendments that protect Native American sites has not been addressed from the point of view of a research design. And the research design and anything that's been done related to that by the scientists hired by Playa Vista have been inadequate in considering religious, medical, and food issues related to how the Native Americans use the area. Secondly, I wish to speak to how the United States Army Corps of Engineers, which gave them their permit, makes this a federal project, and therefore endangered species have to be considered, and they have not been. The Arroyo Toad and the Western Pond Turtle, both federally endangered, have not been adequately addressed by this project. And lastly, this area is a major food and feeding area for the American Osprey.
John Davis? John Davis? No John Davis? All right, John Davis. Thank you, sir. And following John Davis will be Rex Frankel. Rex Frankel after Mr. Davis.
Honorable Councilpeople, there are matters that interrelate between Phase One and Phase Two of the project regarding cumulativity, and I'd like to address my first comment to Councilman Rosenthal. I would request that the Councilman query the city attorney as to what effects Appeals Case Number B213967 for the Phase One project has on this hearing in regard to cumulativity because this hearing seeks to establish the cumulative effects between Phase One and Phase Two, and unless the court is allowed to finish its process, that's an impossibility. To proceed would show great disrespect for the court of appeal process. Furthermore, this council would rely on only hope and guesswork to make the important decision regarding cumulative effects of Phase One and Phase Two. The project proponent is a common enemy of the state in that it has and continues to conduct irresponsible and wasteful extractions of water of the state in clear violation of state water code. Thank you. Please deny the project.
Thank you. Rex Frankel?
Thank you. I'm Rex Frankel. I'm one of the appellant's. City of Los Angeles has a devastating shortage of affordable housing, a devastating shortage of parks and open space, and yet this development is going to pave over the last major open space in the city that's still in private hands. This development is offering 10% of its units is affordable, while most of the residents of the City of Los Angeles will not be able to afford to live in this project. We should be providing 90% affordable housing developments, not 10%. This project is providing a fraction of the city's own open space standards that are required in developments, half of what it should be. Why is this development being given such a massive upzoning? Well, our lawsuit showed us is that this land has no development rights. This 111 acres is currently worth approximately $10 million. If you upzone this property, it could be worth $300 million. If you think about the future of the city and providing affordable housing and providing park space, if you leave the property as it is, the city could easily acquire and accomplish these goals. If you upzone it, you erase the possibility of providing good goals for the city.
Leslie Purcell followed by Charity Love Colbert.
My name was called, and I was outside in the hallway, so if you don't mind, can I just speak? My name is Anthony Morales.
What's your name, sir? Go ahead.
Anthony Morales, I'm the tribal chairman of the Gabrielino Tonga Tribe. My name is Anthony Morales, tribal chairman and chief of the Gabrielino Sangiova Mission Indians. We are the direct and lenient descendants of the ancestry that founded the City of Los Angeles in 1781, and the same ancestry that occupied one of the Laffertyan villages in the Playa Vista area, which was Saugna. We are the indigenous people of the Los Angeles Basin. I come before the City Council as the lead agency to request that Phase Two be put on hold until the archaeological issues of Phase One be addressed. It has come to our attention that there are 300 to possible 1,200 boxes of ceremonial funerary artifacts and possible human remains. These boxes have been offered to UCLA and refused because UCLA has stated that they will not receive sacred items. These archaeological issues have been ongoing for six years or longer, which is against the law under People versus Van Horn decision that states that archaeological items have to be addressed in a timely manner. I ask the, I ask the City Council that Phase Two...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Sir, can I ask you?
Sir, you get a minute to speak.
As a tribal representative, as a government...
I understand that. So with all due respect, the time is up. There's a lot of people that want to speak, and we want to pay respect to everyone. Lisa Purcell's our next speaker. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Reyes has the floor.
For the sake of clarity, this project has three actions. It's Item Three, Thirty, and Twenty-four. So I understand we have cards on each. If we could allow for the time for each at 15 minutes, because I know there's cards on all of them, and that would allow the public to have their voice heard while addressing the protocol and the process of the Council.
Well, we can continue the public response on the different matters. I've sorted out the first items on number three, for, against, and they didn't mark a box. And then we've got Thirty, a whole 'nother stack I haven't sorted out, and there are some that filled out on all three, Three, Thirty, and Twenty-four.
For due process, perhaps we should be consistent, so everyone can say they had their time, and we allotted them 15 minutes for each item.
So someone filled out a card on Three, Thirty, and Twenty-four, where they speak three times?
Twice. No, no, 15 minutes.
I understand. Mr. Reyes, but some folks, we got three items, Three, Thirty, and Twenty-four. Using that, are we going to let each person speak a minute on each item? On Three, Thirty, and Twenty-four?
A city attorney, I want to make sure that we are following everything within the legal process.
As long as it's done fairly for each side, and a reasonable amount of time should be allowed on Item Number Thirty.
What about Three and Twenty-four?
Twenty-four's already had a hearing, and Three has been reopened for a limited purpose.
So we have cards on all three items, Mr. City Attorney. And the question is, if someone filled a card out on all three, do they then speak three times, or do they restrict it to one time, one minute?
I would just guess proceeding as you started on Item Three, and also allow an additional 15, 20 minutes for Item Thirty.
Okay.
Very well. Mr. Rosenthal?
Just a personal privilege for Mr. Morales, who is a major leader of the Gabriel Indian Nation and its relationship to Playa Vista. I would respectfully ask...
It's the pleasure of the Council. He can speak as long as you wish.
Let him have another couple of minutes just to make his statement?
That's fine, without opposition from the Council floor. Go ahead and continue, sir. Mr. Rosenthal, when you're satisfied, then we'll stop. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. As I was saying, the archaeological issues have been going on for six years or longer, which is against the law under People versus Van Horn decision that states that archaeological items have to be addressed in a timely manner. We ask for more open space in Phase Two because this is one of the last remaining natural habitat areas. We ask that there be a designated preserved area for our cultural landscape to rebury our ancestors and their artifacts that were uncovered at the beginning of Phase Two before the court injunction. We ask that there be better wording in the EIR that would address the issue of future discoveries that be left in place because we never want to experience another reburial like the one that took place in December 2008 of 411 ancestors in Phase One where they were buried in a mass grave in layers on top of each other. We ask the City Council to allow us Native Americans the same dignity and respect that was given to the Chinese people when their ancestors were uncovered in Boyle Heights during the construction of the Gold Line. I strongly urge that these issues that I have mentioned be addressed before allowing Phase Two to continue. Wa atkuwata tayiha nuka, in the memory of my ancestors. Thank you.
Very well. Mrs. Lisa Purcell, followed by Charity Love Colbert.
Are you resetting the clock, or should I just start?
No, go ahead. We'll start, we'll start it over. I'm sorry. We'll start it over for you. We're at a minute, I thought.
I believe that the, Council, I believe that the project is not exempt from SB18 consultation requirements. You've just heard Anthony Morales talk about the indignities that his ancestors were exposed to, literally exposed, and put into buckets and barrels and stored in inappropriate manner for a lengthy period of time. I understand there are still some outstanding burial issues to be resolved. The City and Playa Capital argue that their project is exempt from SB18 requirements to consult with tribal members as to cultural and sacred site designation and preservation because it was originally proposed in 2002, prior to the enactment of SB18 into law. However, the appellate court order vacated the project approvals and the certification of the EIR, including, quote, "the approvals of a vesting tentative map, general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, and a development agreement," unquote. SB18 consultation per the Governor's Office of Planning and Research is triggered by the current general plan amendment process.
Thank you. Charity Love Colbert? Followed by Elizabeth Pollak.
Good morning, President, and fellow Council, City Council members. My name's Charity Love Colbert, and I live next door in Santa Monica, and I'm concerned about this project. I feel you shouldn't try to be old anymore because a friend of mine, we rode our bicycles. I don't know if you can see this picture, but we took a picture, they have a little caterpillar, my friend's hands, and I believe that I'm really concerned about the ecosystem because this little caterpillar could become a butterfly. And I'm also concerned about people's health, too, because a friend of mine, she is a manager in Santa Monica, and they brought her over to the wetlands, Playa Vista, to be a landlord and for her children to go to school for free. And it was stated a while back that there's petroleum on that land, and I, on that land. And I would be concerned about their health and future generations as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Please vote no on this issue.
Thank you. Elizabeth Pollak? You don't look like Elizabeth, sir.
I'm not Elizabeth. I'm Tom Francis, and I was out of the room when you called my name.
Okay, you're going to have to wait. Elizabeth Pollak's next. Is Elizabeth Pollak here? Marcia Hanscom? Marcia?
Honorable Councilmembers, Marcia Hanscom with the Biona Institute, Wetlands Defense Fund, and Clean. I just would like to remind you of what this land is. This land we're talking about is where the historical Los Angeles River and three other streams flowed. That's why it's a wetland. No matter what they've done to it, no matter that they've been sucking out the water since all of the rains we've had, this is a wetland. And for this city that has so little open space and so little nature, to not think about 111 acres, this is something that you could use to help clean the stormwater that you have legal requirements to do. This is an area that you could do so much more with, that you could have ecotourism and bring some money into your coffers with long-term jobs, not just these short-term construction jobs. And secondly, I just would like to plead with you to...
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Lisa Green? Lisa Green? Followed by Patricia McPherson?
Lisa Green of the Green Party, I'm a Mar Vista and Venice resident. I am opposed to the project, and I'm asking the Council to vote no against it. It's about responsibility. It's about changing behavior. Why would you vote for it? You want to create economic stability. Well, let me tell you, stability is an illusion. The only permanence is sustainable change and transformation. You have to keep that in mind. Don't do a business-as-usual knee-jerk response and throw more development on a water filtration system that Earth built. In the Green Party, we're Earth party. We speak for Earth. All the people that are opposed to this project are speaking for Earth, not because Earth can't speak, it's because certain people haven't tuned in to hear Earth. If this was going on in the wetlands right now, and you could feel the power of nature and the birds chirping and the wind blowing and the grass moving, you wouldn't have any doubt in your mind to say no. Thank you. Earth matters. Patricia McPherson, I would like to remind you, the developers originally spent $120 million to purchase this land. The taxpayers of the California have already stated they want their endangered habitat, they want their wetlands. They've already spent $140 million of our own taxpayer dollars to buy it back from the developers. How can you not hear this? Also, I have a declaration from the most knowledgeable person at the LA Building and Safety that was the Metro Chief of the Mechanical Plan Check during the time period that Playa Vista Methane Mitigation System approval process was taking place. He personally became aware the gas mitigation systems were allowed to be installed at Playa Vista without first going through a blueprint review, design, and verification with the methane ordinance requirements. In other words, it was illegal. The methane systems were allowed to be installed failing to comply with the appropriate design requirements to assure safe operation over the range of anticipated operating conditions. The most dangerous features that were allowed were cost-cutting measures described as below: a so-called dual system, pipe simultaneously...
Kathy Knight, followed by David Ewing. Kathy Knight? Kathy Knight? Ma'am, your time is up. Is Kathy Knight here? And then David Ewing. Folks, you get one minute to speak, so we ask that you please respect that for the other speakers. There's a lot of people who want to speak today. Kathy Knight?
I'm Kathy Knight. I'm representing the C.R. Call. This is a photo of the land we're talking about. We're asking you, please do not upzone it. We're asking you, please do not upzone it. It's a violation of the L.A. City General Plan Resource Conservation and Management Code, which says preserving habitat languages where feasible to provide wildlife quarters and provide natural animal ranges and save natural resources. That's your own code. This is part of the Biona Wetlands. There are animals that are trying to get across the roads now and are getting killed. If you add twenty-four thousand more car trips a day to this, you know, they are gonna have, that's gonna be up to seventy-nine thousand car trips a day, and they're not gonna be able to cross these roads. This is an extremely endangered ecosystem that's a state ecological preserve. We say leave the current zoning, build the shopping center the residents of Phase One want, they can walk to their shopping center, leave the rest of the area open space, you'll employ people building that shopping center, and leave the rest of it open space to help support this endangered ecosystem. We've already destroyed over ninety-five percent of our coastal wetlands by development already. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. David Ewing, followed by Mary Davis.
Good morning, council members. I want to thank Patricia McPherson for getting everybody's attention. I'm here, I'm here to break up a slightly different side of this, and that is, this is a huge gift to Goldman Sachs and its Wall Street consortium, and that's sort of been unspoken here, but that's really what we're dealing with. We're dealing with at least a hundred and forty million dollars' worth of entitlements that will prevent the city from having the opportunity to put in a treatment wetland. The city is facing huge federal and state fines for water pollution, and there's an opportunity here which you're just about to let slip through your fingers, and you're gonna send all that money to Wall Street. I think that's a shame. I do think the people in Playa Vista need shopping, and the entitlements are there for them to have shopping in Phase Two as it stands.
Thank you. Mary Davis, you'll be our final speaker on this side, then we're gonna go to the four proposals side. Go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Mary Davis, I'm with the Biona Wetlands Land Trust. We live in a desert, we need to conserve water. So if we have a natural treatment wetland on part of that land, we can have some of the water from the watershed go into the natural treatment wetland, get cleansed, and then go to replenish groundwater, or flow into the Santa Monica Bay cleansed, and L.A. is mandated to do that. We have money now from some propositions which have already passed, which would do this kind of thing. We want the current residents of Phase One to have shopping. A small shopping area could share the space with a natural treatment wetland. That would provide green jobs, a natural treatment wetland would provide green jobs. Please leave a legacy for our wonderful city, of which you can be proud. This would make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. The man in the green shirt, you were called earlier, will complete with you. We've still got two more items on this, so we'll hear from more pro and against, but, ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am. We're not done with item number three. I'm now gonna hear from the other side, we still have other speakers on this matter. The man in the green shirt who was called earlier, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir, it's your turn.
Is it a problem if someone comes forward and asks to speak when they turn in a card and she hasn't spoken?
Well, there's additional cards for speakers on both sides. We're gonna hear from the other side, we've got two more items to hear on this matter. So we're not done listening to the speakers, so go ahead, sir. There was a specific period of time that was designated for the speakers, and we are gonna do one side, we'll do the other side, there'll be additional conversation, go ahead.
Okay, so the woman is-
So let's not debate that now. You have a statement to make, please make it.
Okay.
Your time is one minute.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tom Francis, I'm here representing the Biona Wetlands Land Trust, and I really want to speak to people here today that want a job. If you're here today and you're looking to get a job, I would encourage you to ask Maria Elena De Razo and Steve Soboroff, the president of the development, I'd encourage you to ask them, why if this development that's proposed is going to create jobs for you folks in the near future, why does it have a development agreement that has a twenty-five-year lifespan? Okay? So you could ask Mr. Soboroff that. As well, I'd like to point out that if twenty-five years isn't long enough for the landowners to potentially sit on the property, not do anything, and therefore not give you a job, they can also get a dispute resolution and stop the clock. So it's basically a development agreement in perpetuity, is what it really comes down to in the legal arena.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we're gonna go to the four proposal, and we'll hear from, our first speaker will be Steve Soboroff. Mr. Soboroff?
Councilman Rosendale, I respectfully request you give me the same courtesy that you gave to Mr. Morales, because my speech is two minutes, and I think I'm as invested in this as anybody.
Mr. Rosendale?
Me.
Without opposition from the council, Mr. Soboroff, you have two minutes.
First of all, everything you heard today is interesting, and it sounds almost compelling. If any of it was true, I wouldn't work for Playa Vista. In fact, all these things have been brought up by numerous, by the same people, to numerous different bodies, and the courts have ruled, there are only three issues up. Those reports have been completed in a thorough and public, comprehensive manner. Everything else, there have been written agreements, written agreements with Gabriel and Otangas, we've met every agreement. The result is all these issues have been addressed, approved by the city attorney, the Planning Commission, and Plum. All the analysis is done. The village plan before you was approved by Planning and Plum. During subsequent conversations with Councilman Rosendale, I made additional commitments, and I'm gonna live by those commitments. To specific requests, he asked me that we memorialize those commitments, and we've done that. We're gonna live up to our word. We'll move ahead and convert twenty-four thousand square feet of office space to assisted living units, two hundred additional units. We will build the parks concurrently with the residential development, we will market the retail center immediately once the litigation clears. To Mr. Francis on the twenty-five-year speech, we're already under construction, we've spent a hundred and twenty million dollars on infrastructure so far. Four Playa Vista factoids. Number one, it's a community of more than six thousand residents. Out of courtesy to you, we didn't have people fill out cards. Those people, will you please stand up here, who support Playa Vista?
You chewed up five more seconds of your time.
I'll ask the council to give me some more time.
Let's be fair, let's be fair with this, we won't-
Well, you didn't give the other guy two minutes, you gave him more, so give me what you gave him.
We need to... Mr. Rosendale, one more minute for Mr. Soboroff.
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Morales-
He can come back up here and talk for an hour, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Morales had how many minutes?
I didn't keep the track, the clerk kept the track of the time.
Bill, this is a agreement I made with you.
We're trying to be fair with this.
I'm trying to read what I made with you.
Mr. Morales got three minutes, so you have one more minute.
If you wanted six thousand cards, or twelve thousand cards, I could have brought those, but we didn't, out of respect to you. The community is enjoyed by many more people than those who live at Playa. Our parks, which these residents pay for, are public parks. The fire station that we paid for serves the other areas. And the council member got us the ambulance. Playa Vista is good for Los Angeles, that's why I work for Playa Vista. In this economy, the village means more to it than it did in 2004, when you guys approved the same exact plan. The plaintiffs say we should finish every square inch before moving ahead. People in the office, the residential is virtually finished, the office space, all the tenants say you gotta have more housing, so we can move in. We're implementing a model of affordable housing that nobody else has done. Everybody buys their way out of it, other developers offload it, cops, firemen, teachers, nurses live at Playa Vista more than anywhere else in the city. Other people talk the talk, we walk the walk.
Thank you, Mr. Soboroff. Your time is now up, sir. Mary Elena De Razo. Mary Elena De Razo.
Good morning, Maria Elena De Razo, I'm speaking on behalf of the hundreds of unions and hundreds of thousands of men and women who work. We're here to support the Playa Vista project. You know, several years ago, when the council supported the project for the first time, my late husband Miguel stood at this council in support. It's even more important today, given the state of the economy, that we support Playa Vista again today, and that's why I'm here. You know, the working men and women all over the country actually are very supportive of this, because pension funds of those workers are actually investors in this project. They put up money in the front to invest, and I'll guarantee you, they want to make sure that this is a successful project, and this project moves forward. We have anywhere between thirty, forty, up to fifty percent unemployment. Members of the council, I urge that you support this, we need these jobs, we need good union jobs now.
Thank you. Richard Slosson, Richard Slosson, Richard Slosson here, followed by David Kirsch. Richard Slosson, then David Kirsch.
Good afternoon, council members, I'm Richard Slosson, Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, representing a hundred and forty thousand proud craftsmen and women working throughout this area. What do we have with Playa Vista? We've seen the results, we've had all of the traffic issues mitigated one hundred percent by Playa Vista. We have had set aside land for wetlands that improve the situation at Playa Vista. We've created over six thousand craft jobs, hundreds of permanent jobs, residential housing, thirty-two hundred residential housing, with over a thousand of those being affordable housing units. This project has been a boon for the city of Los Angeles from the inception. Those issues that have been brought up over the years about this project being a negative have all been mitigated, they've been dealt with, that's why the city council's approved it in the past, and that's why we support the approval of the second phase by the city council today.
Thank you. David Kirsch. And following David Kirsch, Cindy Hench.
Good afternoon, my name is David Kirsch, I'm here on behalf of the Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee, comprised of the sixty-five thousand member-strong Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and Signatory Union Contractors. I am here to show our support for the Playa Vista project, and to urge the city council to approve the final phase. The Playa Vista project has been a model of smart urban growth that addresses our residential needs responsibly, while at the same time providing a multitude of benefits to the city and to the community at large. As many of you are aware, and it is a fact that hurts to have to keep repeating, the unemployment figures in the construction industry are staggering, close to forty percent in some trades, and the prospects for new projects are dim. So when a project of this tremendous value comes along, it is imperative that we support it wholeheartedly. In terms of construction jobs, this project will generate over seven thousand good-paying jobs with healthcare and pension benefits. It will make possible for apprenticeship training opportunities that provide rewarding career-
Thank you, sir. Cindy Hench, followed by David Kay. And let me remind you, folks, this is for the speakers, you have one minute to speak. I don't want to be rude by cutting you off, but you have one minute, and the clock's on the desk, so you can see the time counting down. Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Cindy Hench, I'm the president of the Neighborhood Council of Westchester Playa, and that's the Neighborhood Council that includes Playa Vista. Our Neighborhood Council voted to support the village, because we believe it's a great project for the city, and it'll bring numerous benefits to our area. It will continue the traffic improvements that we saw from Phase One, including improvements that Playa has agreed to over and above what's actually required. It will bring new parks to the area that are enjoyed by everybody in the community. Critically important at this time, in this economic turmoil, are the new jobs that will be brought, the revenue, and the investment, and the housing to the city. We in the Neighborhood Council, we are the Neighborhood Council for this area, and we have voted to support the project. After extensive review and discussion, we hope that you'll vote to support the village as well.
Thank you. David Kay, followed by Nancy Swain.
Thank you, council and councilmen. My name is David Kay, I'm here to speak in support of the village. I'm a native Angelino, and I've owned my home in Playa Vista for four years. I think nothing informs better than experience, and my neighbors and I shared the experience watching the developer build our community around us over several years and interacting with them. They listened to our input, and they acted on it positively, from the big-picture mix of home, parks, and retail, to the tiniest little detail, like where to put doggy bag waste stations. They listened and they acted. We've seen the developers' actions every day, and with this 2020 hindsight, I think I speak for many of my neighbors when I say that I completely trust that the developers' plans to build the Phase Two Village are in our best interests and in those of the district and the city, and I hope you approve Phase Two today. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Swain.
Hello, thank you, my name is Nancy-
Followed by Paul Williams, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Swain, I've been a resident of Mar Vista for almost thirty years. About ten years ago, I founded a group called Walgrove Avenue Action Group, to work with the traffic speed issues on Walgrove Avenue, and we sought out and received the help of Playa Vista to implement some speed and safety implementations that controlled and actually allowed the students to walk across the street, because we finally got a traffic light in at Walgrove and Mooring Sideway, much to the benefit of the community. It's time to move on with this. There are any issues here that you haven't heard already, so I won't reiterate what any of those are, but I believe that Playa Vista has made itself a responsible model for the growth that we knew was going to happen. Walgrove Avenue Action Group endorses Phase Two, thank you.
Thank you. Paul Williams, followed by Ernest Roberts. Ernest Roberts, following Mr. Williams.
Thank you. My name is Paul Williams, I'm the Vice President of Development and Construction for Lincoln Property Company, and we're building a fifteen-acre development on the east end of Playa Vista. There's a multitude of good reasons why you're gonna want to vote in favor of this project. Clearly, it's supported by the development and the community businesses, it offers a development, a desirable housing component, and retail shopping options that are clearly to the benefit of those individuals that are working in the adjacent office buildings. Furthermore, the development is consistent with Playa Vista and the live-work-play vision, and means new jobs, new city fees, and new tax revenues. The majority of the people here today are in favor of the council approving this development. The labor unions who have in the past supported Playa Vista are also here in support of this development. The Advisory Agency, Plum Committee, and the L.A. Planning Commission, over the past several months, by unanimous vote, have voted in favor of this development. And today, staff is recommending you support-
Thank you, sir. Ernest Roberts, followed by Lisa Fimiani.
Hello, members of the council, my name is Ernest Roberts, I'm Executive Director of PV Jobs, Playa Vista Job Opportunities and Business Services. When I first started on this path, creating this nonprofit, some eleven years ago, a little over eleven years ago now, they asked me to come up with some language that they could use for a program for at-risk youth and adults in the Playa Vista project. I came up with a mandatory requirement, not a goal, with financial penalties for every contractor who fails to comply. I can tell you that as of today, their ten percent commitment is at twelve point seven percent, and we have never instituted a financial penalty against a contractor. And so the program works, and it works well. We have a lot of guys here from the Walden House. Stand up for me. These are the guys that we want to serve on Phase Two, and get them started in their career. Out of the thousands of people that we've placed at Playa Vista, ninety-five percent of them are such a minority.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Lisa Fimiani, and I'm the Co-Executive Director of the Friends of Biona Wetlands. The Friends organization is committed to the restoration and protection of the Biona Wetlands, the Roperian Corridor, and the freshwater marsh system. It has taken over fifteen years for this system to get its approvals and be built. I've heard suggestions by people who are opposing the- I've heard suggestions by people who are opposing the village at Playa Vista, who want to rip out the existing completed corridor and move it while creating a new wetland treatment area in the village. The thought of moving the existing Raperian Corridor is ridiculous. The corridor is built and is functioning successfully. The inclusion of native plants and trees in the Raperian Corridor and freshwater marsh has translated to increased diversity of insects, birds, and wildlife, and created food, breeding habitats, and nesting areas for migrating birds. Since construction of the freshwater marsh was completed in two thousand and three, more than two hundred species of birds have been identified at the marsh. The seven-year-old reconstructed freshwater marsh and the three-year-old rehabilitated Raperian Corridor have been a tremendous-
Thank you. Tom Schulte, Tom Schulte, followed by Perdita Brown.
Council members, my name is Tom Schulte, and myself, along with my wife, and my eighteen-month-old daughter, and six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven other people call Playa Vista home. Plans for the village reflect a wonderful project that completes Playa Vista vision. It's another community that highlights the best of Los Angeles. It'll deliver other substantial community benefits, including housing and open space. Not only will the village provide even more parks for everyone to enjoy and bring retail options we don't currently have, the village will actually help ease traffic in the area. I really look forward to the day, the week, when I can drive my car home Friday night and not start it up again until Monday morning. Playa Vista residents will be able to do their shopping within the community without having to get in their cars and drive to neighboring Westchester and Playa del Rey. Many even drive to adjacent Culver City to shop. The village will help keep money in the city of Los Angeles. Very prudently, when large projects like this come up, you all make sure that other committees, other organizations look at this. They've all approved it, it's all given you the-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Perdita Brown, followed by Alexander Calamoros.
Good morning. My name is Perdita Brown. I'm a resident of Playa Vista. As a matter of fact, I was one of the first people to move into Playa Vista, and I'm proud to be a resident there. In today's economic climate, it's hard to imagine anyone not wanting the village project to move forward. It's a huge investment in real estate at a time when no one is doing it. Due to the economy, the project's benefits stand out even more today as they did a few years ago. Playa Vista has already brought roadway improvements, water quality enhancements, public parks, open space, and new neighborhood retail in Phase One. Now, with the village, it will bring more jobs and revenue to the area. The bottom line is that Playa Vista is a benefit to the city and the area on any measure you look at. To me, it seems like a no-brainer. The village would be an incredible asset to the west side and all of Los Angeles. I hope you will not, I mean not listen to the rhetoric and false claims of our opponents, but will support the completion of the community. I urge you to approve the EIR and help this project today.
Thank you, ma'am. Alexander Calamoros, and then Howard Hackett.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Calamoros. My wife and two daughters and I are residents of Playa Vista. Today, I ask you to vote in favor of the village. The Playa Vista project as a whole is a national and international model for smart growth. I've personally given tours to Australians, Germans, and Chinese visitors who want to learn how to build communities for people who can live, work, and play without having to drive a car. We already have a wonderful freshwater marsh and beautiful park system we share with everyone. The village will allow us to complete the whole of the Playa Vista vision. When the village is built, I invite everyone to visit our community and share in the success of this vision for the future of Los Angeles. In the meantime, if I may approach the clerk, I have about five hundred cards in support of the village. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your support today.
Thank you. Give it to the Sergeant Arms, please, sir. Howard Hackett. And then follow Mr. Hackett, we can go to the opposite side again on public speakers.
In two thousand and four, the EIR was approved, and many in this room that I recognize were there at those hearings. Since then, the opponents have found little itty-bitty things to sue on, so we have from two thousand and four until today before this is going to be really approved again. Now, this is for the, I have a new acronym for the opponents. It's Banana. Maybe you all know what it is, but I'll tell them what it is. It's Build Absolutely Nothing Anywhere Near Anyplace. Now, I have an acronym myself. Please approve this project. Thank you.
And now, on the item number thirty, which is all part of our discussion, the folks that are against Rex Frankel. Rex Frankel-
Excuse me, I submitted a card for item number three.
What's your name, sir?
Bruce Campbell.
Bruce Campbell. Bruce Campbell, you're on the, you're on the opposite side, sir. We're going to call the opposite side now from the cards that we have on the three items. We're going to go to number thirty, so we'll get around to you. Rex Frankel, our first speaker on this.
This is side thirty.
We got three, twenty-four, and thirty. We're now going to hear from the opposite side and the pro side on thirty. We're on number thirty. Mr. Frankel.
Yeah, one of the issues when we litigated Phase One was that Playa Vista claimed that the Phase One project approval did not require approval of a later phase. Now, what Playa Vista's people are saying is that if you don't approve Phase Two, the Phase One project will never be able to fulfill its environmental goals, and specifically that goal is a self-contained development where people don't have to drive outside the project to shop or live or work or play. Instead, what we're now being told is that Phase Two must be approved in order to provide the retail that the Phase One residents was promised. That shows kind of basically bad faith in that the original promise was you don't need Phase Two. Well, now we're told, oh, of course we have to have Phase Two. I would be very interested to hear of how, basically, Councilman Rosendahl's office has spoken with Playa Vista's representatives, and they now say that the park space and the affordable housing are being shared between Phase One and Phase Two. So Playa Vista is basically admitting that Phase One and Phase Two were piecemealed, that they were approved separately, but they're really the same project. I'd like to hear an admission of what's really going on here.
Douglas Reed. Douglas Reed. Is Douglas Reed in the chambers? David Warren. Tina Hayashi. Tina Hayashi. Lisa Bonnet. Suzanne Thompson, followed by Ingrid Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I hope you'll give me more time since I was not allowed to speak on another item.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Suzanne Thompson. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Venice, California, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and let you all know that I have over five hundred personal address letters to Councilman Rosendahl. I spoke to over six hundred people individually within the last eight days. Nobody wants this project. You're talking about money, filling your pockets with money, jobs that the millions give you monies for, and Janice Hahn, you know, in the harbor, people are dying of asthma because of problems with pollution. We have to start working together. It's not a one-issue thing. We all want jobs, but we've got to protect the environment. This is not the place for the jobs. This is not the place for those type of jobs. There are jobs for tourism, there are jobs for recreation, there are jobs for sanctuaries, for these animals, for purification of the water. And Councilman Rosendahl, I plead with you to keep your word. From two thousand and five, the people that put you in office do not want this project.
Okay, thank you. Ingrid Mueller. Ingrid Mueller. Lisa Green, followed by Dan Cohen. Dan Cohen after Ms. Green.
Dear City Council, I'm Ingrid Mueller, a twenty-five-year resident of Venice. We are squeezed in between Playa Vista, it's not a village, it's a city, just like Century City and Santa Monica. Transportation mitigation, schmitigation. I can barely walk down Lincoln Boulevard anymore, let alone drive or bike. Please deny this project. Give us this sliver of green. Create a sacred space for our native Gabrielinos. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Cohen.
This site is unbuildable. There is no way to mitigate the millions of cubic feet of oilfield gas pouring out of the ground. The hydrogen sulfide at five hundred parts per million in the soil will dissolve the concrete in a matter of five or ten years. These gases will come up around the buildings and poison the residents. This is an unbuildable site. You cannot continue to suck down the state aquifer eight to twelve feet, which Playa Vista has no right to suck down, and then dump the polluted water in the ocean. What part of this is not a buildable site don't these biostites and these engineers that say they can engineer something to fit in anything understand? You put concrete in acid, it dissolves. Hydrogen sulfide mixed with water, H2SO4, concrete's a base, it just dissolves. It's very simple chemistry. People need to understand, it's unbuildable.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa Green. Someone mentioned this was a responsible model, Playa Vista. Economically, at twenty years in corporate America, you can't prove to me this is economically viable situation. Do it with true cost pricing and build in the natural resources costs for damaging the wetlands and tell me that it makes economic sense. Responsibility, again, is critical here, changing behavior. I'm for unions, and I'm for labor unions, but I am very disappointed in their shortsightedness here, very disappointed. You can put long-term sustainable jobs in, and you're jumping at cash for short-term gain. I'm very disappointed in union labor. I rode the bus here. Why can't the Playa Vista residents ride the bus to Westchester and go to the mall and go to the shopping centers like I'm going to ride the bus back? Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Campbell. Bruce Campbell. See, Mr. Campbell, I told you we'd get to you. Just be patient. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good day, Council President and Council members. I'm Bruce Campbell from Palms. I oppose upzoning and certification of the EIR at Playa Vista Phase Two. I object to the piecemealing and bait-and-switch tactics used by Playa Vista proponents. Voting yes on this would mean you don't care about historic and seasonal wetlands and associated wildlife habitat. You support bailouts of shady Wall Street firms. You don't care about digging up more native graves or reburying them in stacks with taxpayer funds or separating native remains from the items they were buried with. You don't care about traffic gridlock and, yes, even greed lock on the west side of L.A. and LAX area, and you don't care about ignoring the recommendation from the city attorney's office to delay the vote on this at the Plum Committee, which was then ignored. So I ask you to please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd. And then John Davis, after Matt Dowd.
All right, this is a categorical no, but Bill Rosendahl, he never kept one promise. He's lied about everything with Venice, and I wouldn't be surprised if he's just going to lie. He always looks like he's on the right side. Here's the problem with this one, Channel Thirty-Five. Look at the agenda. It says general plan amendment and zone change. Since Zuma Dog's not here, I'll do it. This is dirty. It goes through Bill Rosendahl, so it goes back to the mayor who got him elected, Richard Reardon, the Grand Avenue project, this dinosaur, another disaster, downtown, Ninth and Flower, the Ritz Carlton, all these development projects. When's the city going to start to do things differently? Look where you're at. You owe four billion dollars, and your net revenue is only three hundred million without paying a cent. How do you pay back four-
John Davis, followed by Martin Rubin. Martin Rubin after Mr. Davis.
Mr. President, I'm with the commission members. There was a Hollywood film that spoke to this project that was produced a long time ago. It's called Village of the Damned. That's what we're dealing with. I want you to know, again, I incorporate my previous comments by reference, I want you to know, again, that the California Water Code, Section 102, defines the groundwater at this site as waters of the state. Your Department of Water and Power, in its letter to you, did not describe the full demands this project makes on state water resources because it only considered the potable water that was coming in for drinking water purposes and other purposes, and there is nothing in the EIR that says anything about the amounts that are necessary to take out of the public water and dispose of in the sewer systems and in the storm drains. We need this water to water our yards. We need to consider reuse for this public water instead of abuse.
Martin.
Yes, Martin Rubin, West Los Angeles resident. Thank you, Iron Bowl Council, for hearing our concerns. In one minute, what do you say that's a soundbite that can catch your ears? Well, one thing is the wetlands in California are basically endangered, and what's been happening at Playa Vista, even with Phase One and the proposed Phase Two, is an abortion, amounts to sort of an abortion of wetlands, and I'm sure that Mother Earth does not approve. The beauty of the wetlands cannot be touched at all by anybody's thoughts of any development that would go on them. The wetlands could serve the city, the whole city, by people seeing what nature is about.
Scott Johnson. Scott Johnson.
Good afternoon now. In the city of Los Angeles, is there anything that's going to be less sacred in the history and heritage of our city? I share in solidarity with the Bono Wetlands. I am a union member, but I think on this issue, Maria, we're wrong. We need to protect our cultural entities, our identity, and our sacred places. A responsible person living in this city will look and feel and see how a project will impact future generations. In my side of town, I am working on a project called Hazard Park Wetlands, named after Henry T. Hazard, who was the mayor of the city of Los Angeles in nineteenth century. If you look at this project here, Hazard Park's a place in a redevelopment zone, out of La Cte. Of course, it's going to provide thousands of jobs in that biotic corridor it's built, but once again, why is they parked a special place placed in a redevelopment zone?
Thank you, sir. Doug Cortof. Thank you, sir. Give that to the Sergeant Arms, please. Following Mr. Cortof will be Joan Winters Rubin.
Hi, Doug Cortof from Seal Beach. You know, John Ferraro, the former councilman, the late John Ferraro, once said, "What are all these people coming here and trying to sell stuff around our city?" But, you know, we're not really trying, I'm not really trying to do that, I'm not from L.A. You have a regional treasure. That's what the Biona Wetlands is and was. It was the estuary of the Los Angeles River. Those estuaries don't come very easily. It takes generations, thousands of years, to build up a seed stock and the valuable resources of that wetland. You know, our troubles are that we gave our money to Goldman Sachs. You guys are just doing the same thing as giving your money to Goldman Sachs. There's no money in this for the city. All there is is tragedy. We should put these guys to work tearing down the buildings that are already there and reinstating the wetlands.
Joan Winters Rubin.
Hi, Joan Winters. I'm a longtime resident of the west side. I won't take up much time. I'm asking you- I'm asking you to vote against this project. I've always been against it. I don't know if you remember Joni Mitchell, but there's a song, you know, "You paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Well, this is what, you know, how much paradise? I mean, the Biona Wetlands is an absolute paradise and we'll never get this land back. There's animals there and that aren't going to be here to speak for them. We're speaking for them. This is not a NIMBY thing. I live miles away, but I've always been supportive of the wetlands. And please don't pave paradise to put up a parking lot.
Now, after Ms. Lansdale, will be Ellen Brennan.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Lansdale. I'm a Native American and environmentalist and an educator. And I just wanted to thank Bill Rosendahl, wherever he is, for representing the past, as he has, with one of the US's largest Native American burial grounds by helping them with the reburial. Also, I want to thank him for representing the present. As a Venice resident, I saw you speak at the Skateboard Park at the opening also. And I know that represents our youth, our society, our economy. And tourism happens to be the number-one moneymaker in California, which brings me to, I hope that you represent our future, which is obviously the environment. That's what tourists come here to see, is the environment. They come here for a year-round outdoor activities, the beautiful green air, the sunshine. I think we can create a lot of jobs with ecotourism. If you open a museum, you know, people come here to see Disneyland and Hollywood, they're over it. They want something new. I think a Native American museum would be very beneficial for tourism here in the area. And also, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please be aware that the shopping the residents want can be built under the present zoning. It's the upgrading of zoning that we oppose. You all have agendas about conservation, about what you see as political realities, potential campaign contributions, chits earned and expected from colleagues and moneyed friends, your place as a power player, assumed obligations to former contributors. I ask you to set that aside for one minute and look at this land. For countless centuries, it's been part of an evolved, undisturbed wetlands that support our oceans. It's fragile land. It's a fragment of the 5% of remaining wetlands on the west coast. It needs stewardship. Not concrete and steel high-rises, dense condos pile on top of each other. It needs your stewardship. The state of California spent $139 million of tax money to buy this wetland.
Thank you, ma'am. And then following Karen will be Sabrina Venskus. Thank you very much. And then Joyce Dillard. So we're on our way. Go ahead.
I had a handout and I wanted to make sure that everyone received it. It looks something like this. Did everyone...
They've been passed out, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Karen Sacone. I am here as a property owner in the area where the development is proposed. I am strongly against this development for numerous reasons, a lot of it you've heard today. But what I'm here to talk about is sea level rise from global warming. A state-commissioned study has shown that the area of the proposed project will be underwater by 2100, in the next, say, 50 to 90 years, that this area will be underwater. If you can see this map here, the bright blue shows the Playa Vista Phase Two underwater. And this is an authoritative map from a study that was pursuant to executive order from the governor of the state of California. In response to that study, the governor issued...
Just, yeah, it's your time, ma'am.
It's really hard to make your point in a minute, people. And this is a really important project, Sabrina Venskus. It's the largest development ever proposed in the history of Los Angeles. I wish we had more time for you folks to hear differing views. You know, the one thing that I think that you council members, I would hope, would think about and look at is that this is $150 million gift and entitlements to Goldman Sachs, which is the majority owner. What is the city getting in return? The city's not getting any rental affordable housing. If you look at the development agreement, no rental affordable housing. They're getting only at, the developers only required to make 125 for sale units affordable only for 15 years. You have a 25-year development agreement, which is unheard of. If you want jobs when you really need jobs, I would recommend that you amend that development agreement so that it's a three- to five-year development agreement, which puts the heat on them to produce jobs now.
Thank you. Joyce Dillard, followed by Tom Fransen.
Yes, I don't think you're taking the public health and safety issues seriously. The mitigation, and by that, please deny, there are problems with mitigation plans. You have no conservation element in the general plan. You will have general fund, funding with this, even though it doesn't say it. There is problems with, you're dismantling your city, there are fire departments being dismantled, police, subtly, it's not even out in the public yet that I hear about. So you don't have the process in place. There's the state water project. You have to take water seriously. That project is low. You need the water. You need to watch the water. And you haven't considered Propo in this, because that does come to play with another project and with operation and maintenance, which is general fund. I do believe that you're overlooking this process in total with plans you don't have. TMDLs, total maximum daily loads, discharges into the ocean, and conservation doesn't mean not using water. Conservation is an industry standard.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir, followed by Tanya Silva.
Good afternoon, council members. Tom Francis, Biona Wetlands Land Trust. I just wanted to add on a point about something that we're all facing, which is climate change. I think all of you understand, I'm sure you've all been following what the scientists are saying. One of the things we're facing on all continents globally is drying up of the center of continents and the coastal areas are going to get considerably wetter. And the reason that applies to the decision before you today is because the Biona watershed is 120 square miles of Los Angeles draining all the way down to right where this property is. And by approving this development, which you don't have to approve, you are foregoing the opportunity to deal with the potential increase, significant increase, in water coming down the watershed due to climate change. Okay? So what you could do is choose not to give this gift of entitlement to Wall Street. What you could do is just say, you know what, we support the amenity package for the Playa Vista.
Thank you, sir. Tanya Silva? Rachel Figueroa? Paul Farazzi? Doris Gilbert? Are you Ms. Gilbert? Ms. Gilbert? Your name, ma'am?
Doris Gilbert.
Doris, go ahead. Your turn. Thank you.
My name is Doris Gilbert and I'd like to speak to the diminishing quality of life due to the traffic. I live in Mar Vista, near the intersection of Inglewood and Indianapolis. I've lived there 30 years. When I came, there was one stop sign at Palms and Inglewood. Now, with the development of the Marina Del Rey, now there's a brand-new stop street at the bottom of the hill, the next block down, then three short blocks at Navy on Inglewood. Then there's also a light on Inglewood and National that wasn't there before. There are four new stop signs and lights and lots and lots of bumps, and it's really very different from in the past. So this project will only make things worse. People aren't really going to stay just in the village there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. James Garrett? Sure your name?
Paul Farazzi.
Go ahead, Paul.
Good afternoon, council members. Paul Farazzi, Culver City resident. And I can tell you that I have seen the negative impacts with regard to traffic in Culver City with regard to Playa Vista Phase One. The Playa Vista developers paid $120 million for the wetland, and it was a wetland. And the public has already paid $140 million to buy a small part of it back. This is a crystal-clear indication of what California taxpayers want, the restoration of endangered wetland habitat, 95% of which no longer exists statewide. We cannot continue to destroy and pave over our important ecosystems. Los Angeles's economic and environmental health could be served through long-term educational ecotourism opportunities, not short-term jobs in creating paved density. It has already been shown that it did not prevent the ongoing bankruptcy issues the issue is seeing today. Please vote no and not make the cities...
Thank you, sir. Say your last word. Say the last word.
If you have the cities, not make it an issue of the bankruptcy of the city's morals as well.
Thank you. James Garrett? Lisa Purcell? James Garrett, are you coming up, sir? Trying to find if Mr. Garrett's here. Mr. Garrett, is that you, sir? He's gone, okay. Go ahead, Lisa Purcell?
Leslie Purcell.
Leslie, I'm sorry.
The RSEIR analyzed greenhouse gas issues, a recent statute. They should also analyze SVA-18, which was passed before the greenhouse gas statutes. Additional residential units, 200 more have now been added, not 2,600 as originally in the EIR proposed, but now 2,800. Is this a new impact? There are general fund impacts. There's going to be huge liability from a high-rise development. The issue of the high-rises, nobody really focuses on. This is not a village. This is a giant city. It can rise 240 feet plus above the top of the bluffs. There are water quality issues with thousands of new residents dumping their pharmaceuticals, detergents, and care products down the drain. It'll go into the stormwater and into the bay ultimate.
All right. Thank you. We've now gone through the time, Mr. City Attorney. We have additional cards. We've maxed out on our time on both sides. So the direction from our City Attorney is to...
Since the council's already been entertaining public comment for the last two hours, I would suggest just allowing 10 more minutes of public comment for the people who have not spoken at all, and then conclude public comment.
All right. If you have not spoken, if you have not spoken, you filled out a card. Because I have the names here, the folks who filled out a card. If you have not spoken, fill out a card. And then we will pull your name out of here to keep the proper record. Your name, ma'am.
My name is Jessica LeBert.
Can you get the microphone closer to you, please?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Jessica LeBert is my name.
Jessica?
LeBert. L-E-B-E-R-T.
There you go. Go ahead, Jessica.
Okay. I am a resident of Venice, California. I've lived there all my life. I'm 22 years old. My parents grew up there. They're in their 50s. And the thing is that we live in nature. Nature does not live within us. I stress the care for this beauty that is the Biona. And this is my first time speaking, excuse my shakiness. Let's see here. We have to focus on the long-term goals of this for both parts of us, for all of humans in our existence. This ecosystem supports the health of our ecosystem. So I think that if we take care of nature, it will rightfully take care of us.
Thank you. Okay, let me make that point one more time. I see some folks in line have already spoken. If you haven't spoken and you filled out a card, I have the cards here, I will pull your card out. But if you've already spoken, you're not going to speak under this particular time. And we're trying to give everyone a fair opportunity. Your name, ma'am?
Cindy Grant.
Cindy Grant. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name's Cindy Grant. I'm a local architect and a resident of Sherman Oaks. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Biona Wetlands and I'm against it because of the inappropriate site location. I'm a member of the US Green Building Council, and they establish the lead, leadership in energy and environmental design standards that the city of Los Angeles has adopted. This is, I downloaded it off the building department's website. It's the framework for the city's green building program. The program addresses five key areas: site location, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, and indoor environmental quality. In site selection, it says right here in the Bible here, "Do not develop buildings on any of these following criteria," which includes wetlands and land that is specifically identified as habitat for endangered and threatened species. I have copies I'd like...
Yeah, the Sergeant Arms will take those from you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Next person, your name, ma'am?
Jennifer Anisman.
Yes, Jennifer, I saw your name in here. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm pro bono counsel for the Biona Wetlands Land Trust. I reviewed the EIR and was dismayed to discover a number of problems. I'll just focus on one. Under the archaeological analysis, the nature of the archaeological artifacts were not identified sufficiently as Native American remains. As a result, the mitigation plan was described as an archaeological treatment plan, or ATP, under the programmatic agreement. This is the wrong treatment. Had the analysis identified the artifacts as Native American remains and associated artifacts and grave good, which I believe everybody agrees they are, then the correct analysis for treatment needs to be under the California Native American Grace Protection and Repatriation Act, or CAL-MAGPA. This is an important defect in the analysis on the EIR and can be aggressively challenged if it's approved today. Long after this project is completed, the city of Los Angeles is going to have to live with it. I also want to point out that I was speaking to some of the lovely people here with the "yes to the village" stickers, and some of them claim that they don't know why they're here and that they were asked to come and wear the sticker.
That was a surprise. Sir, your name? Your name, sir?
Kevin Norton, IBW Local 11.
Wait, wait, hold on, Kevin Norton. Kevin Norton, right on top. There you go.
That's right. My name's Kevin Norton. I represent IBW Local 11. Someone didn't give me a sticker, but I do know why I'm here. This is the third EIR for Playa Vista, second for the Phase Two. We need to approve the EIR. We need to get people back to work. We need to finish the job. The job's halfway done. Half of it's undeveloped. It's already got the foundation laid up for half of these projects. We need to move forward. We need to put people back to work. And we need to do the job that we were put in here to do, which is get this people, the city of LA, to work. Thank you.
Your name, ma'am?
Yes, Susan Polka.
Say it again?
Susan Polka.
Susan Polka. I saw that name. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'm speaking in reference to the State Commission report regarding the rising water levels. And the State Commission that created that report recommends that the wetlands and the potential migratory paths should be protected. Development should be prohibited on natural lands that are immediately adjacent to the wetlands at risk. And this development that they're proposing is on those wetlands that are at risk. I urge you to please vote no.
Thank you. Next person that hasn't spoken that filled out a card, your name, ma'am?
Stephanie Beckman.
Your name?
Stephanie Beckman.
Stephanie Beckman? There you go, Stephanie.
Okay. I am a resident of Playa Del Rey and I have, for long, we live near this ecosystem. It's beautiful. I'm sure the very reason that many of these people wanted to come and move there. However, to use the jobs excuse to build so close to what we've already identified as a natural preserve will actually endanger the very thing that we've just had people vote in the state to save. And I know that you were in agreement with not going forward when you were running for mayor with the Phase Two because of the fault of the upzoning. And other council members have at times really recognized that the upzoning is outrageous. And that's really the problem, is that one is being slipped under here within this approval. So you just need to stop, take a minute, as the Plum Committee... So you just need to stop, take a minute, as the Plum Committee recommended, and really get your teams in looking at what's inside of that upzoning before approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person, your name, sir?
Cosmo Buon from Santa Monica.
Yes, Cosmo, I saw your card in here. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I wanted to say a couple things. I am a member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and many of us do care about this particular ecological spot. It's very, very important. So, you know, union opposition is not unanimous. The other thing is, I am amazed that, I really think there can be no doubt that this mega-monstrosity, 30 to 40 times its current zoning, I mean, what's the point of zoning, can be built on this open space? It's a very vulnerable, very rare place. I want to support the Sierra Cub Alternative Plan, which is a little local shopping center for Playa Vista people if they really need it. A water treatment wetland, playing fields in the dry season, native plant garden, and a space for the Gabarino Tona Indians to have a cultural area where they can rebury their ancestors. This last one alone should be sufficient to stop this plan. Thank you.
Next, your name, ma'am?
Maria Lipowsky.
Maria?
Yes. Turned in a card this morning.
Maria, I don't see... What's your last name? Maria, I don't... I don't see a card for you, ma'am.
May I speak anyway for a minute?
No. It's only the people who haven't spoken to fill out a card. I'm going by the rules that we have, so... The next person, please. Your name, sir?
Robert Garcia, President, Council of the City Project.
Robert Garcia, you're right there.
Thank you very much. Good morning, good afternoon. We have submitted written comments. 1,428 cents of remains of the Native Americans have been found in Phase One. We ask that there, any remains that are found in Phase Two, that there be a provision for preserving the remains in place. Number, first of all, second, that there be land set aside so that Native Americans can visit and honor their ancestors. And third, we request that the city of Los Angeles do an equity analysis under the civil rights laws as a condition of receiving federal funds and state funds. That number one, there be a clear analysis of the impact on Native Americans. Number two, that there be a clear statement of alternatives. Number three, that this equity analysis include Native Americans in the decision-making process. And number four, that the implementation plan address the equity concerns identified during that report. As the United States Supreme Court recognized in 1955...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Sir, you have to relieve that for the next speaker. I know who the next person is. He does have a card here. Arnold Sachs, here's your card. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. What was interesting I found was the fact that we heard the attorney say, "He walks the walk." Tim Lewicki came in here, who represented LA Live, he walked the walk too, crying about how his advertising had been vetted through the council. So what's been vetted? Because you hear that this is a project that's hundreds of millions of dollars and how it creates hundreds of millions of dollars of jobs. But on the other side, you lose hundreds of millions of dollars in tax incentives. LA Live got 10 years of free public safety services for all the events that are held at the arenas. They just got 20 years of bed tax revoked from the new LA Marriott. When the unions came in support of Tim Lewicki and his advertising, they didn't show up for the unions that were complaining about having their jobs cut when they found out that LA Live got 20 years of bed tax reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Which side of the unions do you support?
Sachs, thank you. Sir, you've already spoken. You've already spoken. Sir, we did on number one. Number two, we haven't opened a public hearing. On number three, sir, on number three and number 30, we've had a public hearing. I have additional cards. The people who are in line have left. The folks that are remaining in this chamber, if you filled out a card and haven't spoken, that's what this period of time is for. It's now 1 o'clock. This meeting started at 10 o'clock. We've now three hours in this meeting. The additional cards that I have, people have not come forward, or they've already spoken and filled out multiple cards. We've heard on items number three and on number 30. We have not heard on number 24. So we've had a public hearing on items number three and on number 30.
Excuse me, Ms. Design. There was a full public hearing on item number 24 already.
Correct. I'm just returning to the question regarding the Brown Act. We only heard on number three and number 30, and we took the public comment cards on both of those matters. And there's no additional members of the public in the chambers that are, that have filled out a card that haven't had an opportunity to speak. Everyone who's filled out a card has had an opportunity to speak. So we are now going to go, and 24 is still remaining. Mr. Reyes, to you, sir.
Thank you, Council President. Again, for the record, we did have public hearing on 24. So we're done with the public hearing portion of our legal obligations. So I want to make sure that's very clear.
That is correct, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. If we could ask the staff to come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Roush.
Good afternoon, Councilman Reyes.
Okay, again, this is for the record and clarity, for my colleagues. Can you just briefly summarize each item that's before us?
Certainly. My name, first of all, for the record, is Charlie Roush. I'm a senior city planner for West Coast of Los Angeles and also acted as the deputy advisory agency on the tract map for this case, and a hearing officer for the zone changes, plan amendments, and specific plan amendment. What you have before you right now are a community plan amendments to the Westchester Community Plan, basically going from light and limited industrial, high and medium housing, and regionals, and mixed-use commercial, to community commercial and high and medium housing, thereby eliminating the industrial designation, industrial zoning from the property. Zone changes are from M, Playa Vista, R4, and C2 to the C2 and R4 zoning, specific plan amendments to the plan text, to the Playa Vista Plan Area D, specific plan to accommodate the proposed projects, and also the approval of a development agreement between Playa Capital and the city of Los Angeles. Along with these actions is the appeal by Rex Frankel and others of the approval of vesting tentative tract 60110 reconsidered and the certification of the project EIR. Project is the construction of the village at Playa Vista, Phase Two of the overall project, which will consist of 2,600 residential units, 175,000 square feet of office space, 150,000 square feet of retail commercial space, and within those square footages, 40,000 square feet of community-serving uses. Project also has an equivalency program similar to the LA Sports and Entertainment District and other specific plans that you have approved, which allow for up to 56,832 square feet of retail space to be converted into either 200 assisted living units or a combination of the two, and as long as this does not exceed the trips generated by the 125,000 square feet of office space which would be removed. Repairian corridor and restoration of a portion of the Westchester bluffs containing 11.7 acres of open space are also part of the approval. The actions were previously approved by the city in 2004. However, in 2008, Los Angeles Superior Court issued a writ of mandate to the city to vacate these previously approved actions in response to court, in responsive litigation, and a Court of Appeal ruling which found that the previously certified EIR contained legal deficiencies with respect to the analysis of land use, archaeological resources, and wastewater impacts. In addition, these three items were restudied, and in addition, because of the change in the California Environmental Quality Act, the environmental impact report also considered global warming impacts. And those are basically all the items you have before you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, this is probably one of the most challenging projects that we've gone through in many years, and Lord knows we've been through so many. But the fact is, I strongly believe that the Councilman of the district, Councilman Rosendahl, has done what he has, been able to give in all of the legal parameters and all of the precedents that has been set in terms of the agreements, the legal proceedings. And I just want to acknowledge his credit. When you look at the motion before you, this motion applies to all three items. So I want to make sure that's clear. And this motion essentially reflects his ability to work with the various stakeholders, and it's obvious that there are different perspectives, a lot of passion, and issue in terms of what is priority and what isn't. But what you have before you in the motion is a shift in which we convert office uses to assisted living facilities pursuant to the land use equivalency transfer program in the Playa Vista specific plan. And what this does, allows more housing for seniors. It addresses the needs of the frail as they age, and assisted living facilities allows them to maintain their independence as they continue to enjoy their golden years. The second action in this motion speaks to how he was trying to achieve a stronger focus on market retail. Many of the residences there, residences in the facility, and future residents would like to have a much more comprehensive environment by creating more retail opportunities. So that aspect of the project would essentially be a high priority in making sure that the village fills itself out as essentially a way to accommodate the needs of the local folks, which minimizes trips of folks coming and going. It makes it more self-contained. And then the last element, which is not in the motion, but I know he pushed very hard for, was to prioritize the open space, the green space in the area, and to essentially allow that to be a priority as the project evolves. So these are agreements that were not there before. These are conditions that were not before. In the quest to try and achieve this balance, obviously, not everyone is happy. But again, sometimes I think that if everyone leaves angry, we did our job, because we could not address everyone's priorities. So that being said, we have a first and a second, and I think Councilman Rahon has been the second on that motion, and I ask for an aye vote, and we can conclude this chapter of this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a pretty well-planned project. It's done by a developer who I have a lot of respect for, and I know we need the jobs. And I know that Plum has given very careful consideration, and I know that we've done a lot of things to improve the project. But I still have some questions, and I'm not sure whom to address them to, but I would like to have some answers to some of the issues that were raised. I don't know whether it's Plum, the developer, maybe you can assist me in figuring out who might best answer them. For instance, there's questions about a wildlife corridor, about animals getting run over and not addressing that adequately. Have we done everything we could to address the travels of wildlife, or are there things that could be done to improve that either now or even after the project's approved?
Mr. Roush, if he can help us respond to that detail?
The, one of the items that the Playa Capital Company did was the daylighting of Bluff Creek, which previously had been underground. And this goes along the base of the bluffs above Westchester. And I believe that they have a, now have opened up, a underground corridor for wildlife under Lincoln Boulevard, which will allow wildlife to move between the freshwater marsh, which was developed in the area to the west of Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Boulevard, and the riparian corridor along Bluff Creek. So yes, I believe that's been taken care of.
So we think that's solved all of the needs for wildlife? Could there be other places where these could be added? That would be more...
Those are the major areas where there is open space. Northerly of Jefferson Avenue, Jefferson Boulevard, which runs along the north rim of the area, is all developed with industrial properties at this time. So most of the open space in which you would have wildlife is along the west side of Lincoln Boulevard. So I believe it's been taken care of.
Mr. Corretts, I don't know how much detail you want. I mean, we can open it up to the applicant, and then for equal time, you probably want to hear from the other side. So I don't know, how in detail do you want to go?
Well, I know, I know everyone will be impatient because we've been hearing from folks for several hours, but I probably want a few minutes of detail on a few of these questions, just so I can feel confident in my own mind to possibly vote for this.
What you're hearing from Mr. Roush is what's in the file, how it's going to evolve. But if you want more, to be fair, we can ask the representative from the developer to give a minute to answer, and then the other side a minute. Just so you'll hear it from both points of view, because they're both going to differ.
I would appreciate that.
Honorable councilmembers, George Milston, representing Playa Capital, Playa Vista. With respect to the habitat corridors, in fact, Playa Vista has created a riparian corridor, which is, Mr. Roush has indicated, is along the bluff on the southern section of the property. That is about a 25, 26 acre corridor that then connects across Lincoln Boulevard to a new freshwater marsh. In addition, that freshwater marsh and the riparian corridor are now the homes to over 200 new species. In addition to that, Playa Vista has conveyed to the state approximately 600 acres of land, which is now part of the Biona Wetlands area, that the state will be recreating a new wetlands area. So Playa Vista and the state have done a tremendous job of adding to and increasing the habitat corridors in this area. I hope that answers your question, sir.
If, if it turns out that there is still a problem with wildlife getting run over, and there may be other places for crossings, would your development be open to additional crossings if that need proves to be the case?
I think that would have to be in the state areas that are on both sides of Lincoln Boulevard, because the area between Playa Vista is now completely built out as residential today. Thank you.
And on a related question...
Thank you, Mr. Milstead. Mr. Corretts, you're, you're out of time. Mr. Reyes, do you want to have the counterpoint on this?
Well, just one minute.
Now, who would be the representative that's most knowledgeable? The lady that's going to have a baby.
There's not a lot of organization on this side of things, but...
We're not going to open this up for another hour of speaking. So we want to get someone who's knowledgeable, Mr. Reyes.
Okay.
Just one minute.
Mr. Cardness.
Okay, so the problem...
Hold on, ma'am, hold on, please, hold on. Mr. Cardness, you have the floor.
I have a question, and the City Attorney to clarify. The question of the council member on this situation does not require for us to hear from one side, two sides, three sides, or 10 sides. Is there any requirement of that?
No, there isn't. I think, I think the intent was to get both sides of the answer to the question. Mr. Milston already spoke, and now...
I respect that. I just want, I don't want people to interpret that it is a requirement. Okay, that's the whole thing.
Right, well, again, in the spirit of balance...
Because there's 50 experts on both sides who believe that their way of saying it is the right way.
Exactly, just offering one minute to each side, that's all.
Okay, well, we have, we have the side...
Only one person.
We have the side from the developer, Mr. Milsteadsville. Now, if you're the designated speaker from the other side, sir, we gave Mr. Milstead two minutes to speak. In all fairness, we'll give you the same opportunity. So amongst the folks there, if you can figure out which individual represents you on this particular matter.
In a hurry.
And you'll get two minutes, sir.
I'm going to take 30 seconds and then give one minute to Rex Frankel. My name is Robert Vanderhook, and thank you, Councilman Corretts. And the question, as I understand it, is about wildlife corridors and whether they exist and are adequate. They are not adequate. They do not exist. There are no underway, underpassageways for wildlife, such as coyotes or other birdlife as seen by this photograph. And there's no connectiveness that occurs for most of the types of wildlife there. Some of the birds can fly over the highway that, but the mammals are now able to, and they are repeatedly hit. And all the types of small animals, such as reptiles and amphibians, are also not, the wildlife corridor does not exist, and it's not suitable. And Rex?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak about this historical issue. Sentinela Creek, which is what's now being termed the Riparian Corridor, has always been open to the sky for the past 50 years. I've been a resident of this area for 45 years, since I was born here. Everything, the record has all the maps and the photos that show this area, that Sentinela Creek was open to the sky since Howard Hughes located his plant site there. And the point is, is that because Sentinela Creek was a wildlife migration corridor that led into the Phase Two site, the developer, by building his concrete road system, is cutting off the connection from the natural area into the middle of the site. And the middle of the site, according to photographic evidence, which is already in the record, shows the Phase Two site was covered in wetlands and ponds every time it rained in the wintertime. So there's been substantial wildlife occupation of the Phase Two site, and it connects directly through a historic Sentinela Creek that's been open to the sky, to the rest of the Biona Wetlands, and this project will cut it off.
Thank you. Go ahead, you have 12 seconds.
Kathy Knight, a local resident told me she's seen two dead herons on the entrance to the 90 freeway. I asked her to please document it. She says, "I can't stop my car when I'm getting on the freeway. There's a lot of wildlife out there being killed."
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Carets?
That concludes the time, sir.
Yes, they had their two, and the other side has two. Mr. Carets, you're still up?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'll only ask one other question. I know methane gas has always been a question from the very beginning of the first phase, but I haven't been close enough to it to know the answer. Do we feel confident that we have handled all the safety issues relating to methane gas in Phase One and Phase Two?
Mr. Carets, my understanding is that the staff, building and safety, public works, the city family has been responding to these issues over the years. And again, Mr. Ross, if you want to lay, put forth any other detail, anything else you'd like to add?
Not really. It's not something that a planning department normally deals with. That's, those are basically building and safety issues or grading issues, which are all done by then.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone here in the room who's put the last three and a half hours or four hours here, driving here in the additional time. I want to thank the residents of Playa Vista, the 6,000, that have invested their money, their emotions, their families, and their lives to make what I consider one of the most beautiful home groups, communities I've seen in the world. There is a tremendous sense of family and connection. I went and spoke before a group of you to feel your energy, which is one of tremendous commitment to that property. And it is an incredible example of how people from different walks of life and different circumstances can come together. I remember the moms in the strollers. I know the old folks. I know the combination of energy that's in the community that's there. And hats off to your commitment. To those throughout the rest of the district that have emailed me, wrote me, called me to remind me of a pledge. It's a heavy-hearted decision for me. When I ran for office in 2004, one of the defining moments was when the issue came up about Playa Vista Phase Two. I stood in a room with my neighbors at the Venice High School. And at that point, as a candidate, I felt strongly that there wasn't enough public outreach and enough discussions, especially with my neighbors, who felt tremendously impacted and wanted more answers. So at that point in the campaign, I did two things. I said no to Phase Two, and I signed a pledge. The pledge very clearly said to the candidate, Rosendahl, would you agree that Phase Two should not start until Phase One is done, and that the mitigating issues of Phase One are quantified and clarified? I signed that petition, and then as I saw what happened on the property, I saw the homes go up, beautiful, and the people move in, terrific, and have created a tremendously beautiful community. But I also saw that the commercial side had not reached to the degree that it claimed it would to complete Phase One. It's hard for me because frankly, I think there are issues in the room here about the economy and the situation that also need to be focused on. However, what good am I if I don't stand by my word, even at this situation in this juncture in time? So I stand up to say I will honor my pledge, and I will vote no.
There's no other speakers on the queue. Mr. City Attorney, we have three items, 330 and 24. There has not been the opening on 24. Do you want to discuss that before we take our votes?
Just to repeat, Items 3 and 24 already had public hearings in Plum. The council elected to reopen the hearing on 3, did not elect to reopen the hearing on 24. And also, Item 30, a hearing was required, which took place here throughout most of the morning and this afternoon.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, and I believe there's a certain order we need to vote on each item to make sure we are responsive to the development agreement itself. So I believe you have the order already before you.
Yes. Madam Clerk, we're now going to vote on these matters. Madam, go ahead.
Terry Coughlin, the CS City Attorney's Office. This specific plan has to be approved either before or simultaneously with the development agreement.
So the city attorney advisors all taking it once?
They can all be taken together.
All right, so we're going to vote on the agreement 330 and 24, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct.
All right, so colleagues...
As amended.
As amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter is now complete. Thank you. That matter is now complete. Thank you for the folks from the community that came today. Mr. City Attorney?
And the ordinances will go over a week, and which would be the sixth, I believe.
For the 12 votes. Very well. That completes these items. It'll go over a week for the 12 votes, Mr. Sobel. That was the statement by the city attorney. So, Madam Clerk, does the chamber clears?
Just to be clear, there's no meeting next Friday, so it'll carry over to the following Tuesday.
Very well. Mr. Cardenas, to reconsider an item.
Yes, I apologize. Item 53 to reconsider. I just needed to announce a verbal amendment.
So we want to open up 53 for reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, 53 is now open.
Thank you. I apologize, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that the document says $634 in the motion, and the amount should say $937. So I just wanted to make that technical correction.
Correction to that matter on that item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very well. Sergeant Arms, if you could please clear the chambers. Folks, we're still in session, so we appreciate your cooperation in remaining quiet. Next item is number two.
Called Special for Cards.
Ms. Perry, that number two is for you, correct?
Yes.
If I could hear from...
Actually, why don't I just say what I have to say, and then you can call the cards, because I don't think there's that many. I wanted to say to my colleagues and to those listening that I support the execution of a disposition and development agreement with Pacific Center Place and the allocation for up to $750,000 in tax increment funds to support the rehabilitation of a vacant manufacturing site located at 812 East 59th Street in Council District 9. This property is located in the Goodyear Industrial Tract, which is the largest continuous and self-contained industrial area in the city of Los Angeles. The Goodyear Industrial Tract is over 200 acres and is home to a number of garment and textile businesses. Recently, the Community Redevelopment Agency of Los Angeles conducted a survey of business owners in the Goodyear Industrial Tract and found that the garment and textile sector employs 37% of the employees in the tract, with over 2,000 jobs, yet represents only 29% of the businesses. This fact highlights the importance of the apparel industry to Los Angeles. And additionally, in 2006, the LA-EDC conducted a study of the apparel industry and found that it creates nearly 1 million jobs and generates over $5.1 billion in state and local tax revenues on an annual basis. This proposed development consists of soil remediation and rehabilitation of two neighboring existing buildings in the Goodyear Industrial Tract. The rehabilitation will include structural upgrades and repairs, new electrical systems, new heating and cooling systems, and new bathrooms. This rehabilitation will eliminate a nuisance building and attract new businesses. The project will create 74 jobs within five years. At least 50% of those jobs will be living wage jobs, and the developer has agreed to have the on-site tenant meet all local hire requirements. In 2007, the CRA acquired the site for $2.7 million, utilizing a $2.6 million community development block grant funds in order to rehabilitate the property, expand the business, and bring quality jobs to South Los Angeles. The CDBG funds were allocated to this project by City Council nearly three years ago in a previous action. Now it is time for us to complete this project, and I ask for your support. And then go to the cards, please.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We have three speakers on this. Julie Butcher. Julie Butcher, I don't see her here. Tim Butcher. Tim Butcher is here. And Matt Dowd. Is Matt Dowd here? So it looks like Timothy Butcher, you're the only speaker on this matter.
Good afternoon, Council. Are you kidding me? Up to $4 million to bring a sweatshop into South LA? While you're talking, on the one hand, about laying off 4,000 of my colleagues that have good-paying jobs and we can afford to raise families and have a decent standard of living, there's talk of 50% of these jobs are going to be living wage, $10 an hour. What about the other 50%? What, $5 an hour, $6 an hour? I would think that the folks down in South Los Angeles deserve better than to have a sweatshop brought in. This is not creating new jobs. This is moving 30, 40 jobs from somewhere else up here. They're not good paying. There's no guarantee of any kind of benefits or any kind of a sustainable living wage with them. I have visions of Oliver Twist. I have visions of South LA turning from color into black and white. Please do not squander the CRA funds on something as meaningless and unable to help South LA as this. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very well. Why don't we move my item down the line, and we'll continue, take the next item, except move 22 to the end.
Okay. Next item is Item 29, called Special for Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, 29, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll move this item. I just ask that we amend the committee report on 29 at instruction or direction number two, and that we ask that that instruction be added to the council file number 090963, so that the city attorney can resolve the question while he's working on the local hire ordinance.
Ms. Parks, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking for something else.
No, no.
Okay. On that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very well. That matter is approved. Next item, please.
Item 36, called Special for Cards.
Number 36. Arnold Sachs on number 36. Arnold Sachs, you going to come up, sir?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs, LAX, the gateway to LA. I'm telling you, you should have heard Supervisor Antonovich's description of the Tom Bradley Terminal. He thought it was like going to a third-world country. But this is more work, the master plan for LA-Lawa, brought to you by Lawa. Which master plan? We don't know. The Crossfield taxiway, the Midfield concourse, the Midfield taxiway. It's changed, 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 changed. Didn't the last time they planned something, they're going to create some new concourse gates for $90 million and then tear them down? It's a great plan. You can count on LA-Lawa leading the way. How they got $90 million, and they can't find a penny to spend on light rail. Did you see the picture in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago? Detroit's got light rail at its airport, gateway to LA.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers. No speakers on the queue. We will open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That passes. Next item, please.
Item 22, called Special for Councilmember Zine.
Number 22, Mr. Zine. Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, this matter deals with state legislation, Senate Bill 949 by Senator Lopez, and what it does is restrict the municipalities, including the city of Los Angeles, from establishing the ability to receive fines for vehicle code violations. Currently, on a red light violation, if someone goes to Travis School, it's over $500. We get $157. The rest goes to the state and a small portion of the county. What the state is attempting to do is block, and some jurisdictions have already implemented, where they have taken some of these violations, photo red light in particular, turn them into administrative violations. They capture the fine in the local jurisdiction, and no dollars then go to the state. The state is attempting to block our authority to do that, so I would ask that we support what the Information Technology Committee did to oppose this particular Senate Bill 949, to permit us to discuss, to review, to decide if this is going to happen. But what the state assembly is trying to do, or the state senate is trying to do, is block us from even discussing it, trying to put a barrier so we cannot recover those dollars that we're expending for the enforcement of vehicle code violations here in the city of Los Angeles. Two cities that I know of have already implemented this program. Other cities are looking into it. It helps the local revenues. It simply says that if you're paying for the enforcement, you're paying for the police officers, whatever program you have in place, those dollars stay within the local jurisdiction. They don't get taken by the state. So we would request that we oppose this bill, Senate Bill 949, to give us the ability and the opportunity to review this and to pursue this with legal cities, independent cities, and other jurisdictions that are favorable of keeping those dollars local and not have the state ban us from even discussing or proceeding forward with the possible implementation of a program to capture those dollars that are currently, as I say, majority of them go into the state of California. That would be my request. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. There are no other speakers on the queue. Seeing none, we will vote on the matter. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That matter passes. Next item.
Item 38, called Special for Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, probably don't remember, but in December of 2007, a group of 18 environmental labor homeowner advocacy groups led by the NRDC filed an appeal of the Harbor Commission's certification of the TRAPAC EIR, which was really sort of the first major terminal expansion and modernization that we've done at the Port of Los Angeles in a very long time. And they filed the appeal based on the fact that the project did not adequately analyze negative impacts of the port. Through, once it came to the city council and my committee, the appeal, we worked for months, sitting down...
months, sitting down with the executive director of the port, with one of the commissioners, my office, with all the appellants, there's about 14 or 16 of them, and we negotiated a settlement agreement, an MOU, on how we could move this terminal forward, which would create about 4,000 construction jobs and 15,000 long-term ongoing jobs at the port because of the ability to bring more cargo through this terminal. But one of the pieces of that MOU was sort of a study on the negative impacts that the port has on surrounding communities like Wilmington and San Pedro. So what we have before us today is the scope of this work for the off-port mitigation study, which will help us collect and present baseline data on existing sensitive sites and public health facilities in Wilmington and San Pedro. We've known that there have been health impacts from the port. This study will help us quantify that so that in the future, we can identify these impacts and then have the proper mitigation happen. So everyone's on board with this. It's great having the port executive staff, the city attorneys, along with NRDC on the same side on this one, and I urge an "I" vote that we can continue to look at some of these impacts, mitigate these impacts, while we continue to be a competitive West Coast port, bringing in more cargo and helping the economic development, not really only of this region, but of the entire nation. So this is a win-win for everyone. I urge your "I" vote on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Han. There are no other speakers on the queue, so we will proceed to vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That passes. Thank you, Ms. Han. Next item.
There's been a request to continue item 56 to Wednesday, March 31st.
There's no objections. 56 will be continued. Next item.
Would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
We will recess this meeting and go into the special meeting.
Alakon Kornis, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Kukoyan, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 14 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First item.
Items 57 through 58 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 57 was heard in committee, though I believe it was continued. Do you wish to hold that item on the desk?
We'll hold that item on the desk.
And would you like to take a vote on item 58?
Mr. Labange?
I can't find it fast enough. Item 60. Is this the chat? It's still coming up? Thank you.
58. So, Ms. Perry, did you, were you on 58?
57 was on the desk.
Okay. Ms. Perry, then we'll go to vote on, again, which item number?
58.
58. Yeah. Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That passes. Next item.
Items 59 through 62 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on 59, 60, and 61.
Okay. So we'll take up item numbers 59 first, then. We do have a request to speak from a public. Do you want to, Ms. Perry, do you want to speak first and then go to the public hearing on this?
I wanted to speak on the ECAP item first. We're not on that.
We're on 59.
I know.
All right. So we'll take item number 59. We have a card from Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks? 59.
Could you put that up on the board, please, sir? So that we can see what it is?
You know, you're speaking on, Mr. Sacks?
Well, I left, I lost my copy of the agenda, sir. I got so caught up in this discussion over Playa Vista. But you should have it up on the board so the public knows what it is. Thank you. Thank you.
Is the clock running?
Ah, Congressional, yes. The funding. Thank you, Mr. Labange. It says in here fiscal impact statement. Of this amount, $105,142 will reimburse the general fund for the salary and fringe benefits of one GRYD program manager, of $69,290. And a portion of central services costs $23,562. Well, if you add those two numbers together, they don't come up to $105,000. But more importantly, you're discussing the salary and the fringe benefit. That's why it's so important with these grants, to discuss the salary and the fringe benefit so the public knows what they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. There are no other speakers on this item. Proceed to vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We'll take up item number 62. Now, Mr.?
We ask that go forthwith to the mayor.
Forthwith. Okay. Item number 62? Next item?
Item 60, called "Special for Cards."
Okay. First card is from Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. This is one of Public Works' ways of getting rid of responsibility to the local communities that their projects are affecting. This calls for taking funds from individual projects and putting them someplace else. We don't know where they would go. There's no local participation. The neighborhood councils won't know where the money is going. Nobody will know except for Public Works. This was supposed to be arts for each individual project in each individual area that's affected by their projects, not for putting it into some arts committee that may be on the west side, the north side, south side, San Pedro. It was for the individual communities that are affected by Public Works projects. Therefore, please vote against this one and reconsider it. They know how to do arts for individual projects if they just are held to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Paul Gamberg?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Councilmembers. I come to you as a representative of the Barnesville Art Center Student Advisory Committee, and unlike the last speaker, I understand that this motion, with the help of many of the council people, will put money directly where in the middle of this derivative crisis. I say derivative because the speed of Band-Aids is moving faster, and so I now understand what a derivative is. It's when the speed of speed keeps increasing. The crisis increases, and it pains me to say that in order to create a bridge to private partnering art centers, you need to have some funding to keep the program alive. It's like having a going concern and having someone come in and take it over. So there are two things needed. One would be covered by the current motion, which is putting some funding to that bridge, to a private partner for these art centers. And another thing is needed is a partnership dialogue on methods and procedures. Unfortunately, right now, it's costing us about $263 an instructional hour to educate a student at Barnesville that's paying $3 to $4 an instructional hour. We're blowing through money too fast. We need a dialogue with the department and the local support groups to change the program for July and keep it alive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gamberg. First speaker, Mr. Weezer? I'm sorry. Okay. Well, you didn't have your button, so go ahead, Mr. Labange. Go ahead. Labange first.
No, wait, Mr. Smith.
We'll take Mr. Labange first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, for being the fine gentleman for the 14th. Members, this is an action that came out of creation of committee. I'm going to call on Mr. Reyes. It was his motion, but it gives us an opportunity. We do have the CAO, city attorney, and the general manager of the department. If you could just be there for questions. It's an opportunity that Mr. Wesson thought of to help centers in his region of the city. It's not by district, it's by region. These centers help facilities throughout. I ask for an "I" vote, and it gives us an opportunity to keep these art centers open as we struggle but achieve what we need to do, but we struggle through this tough time economically. May I call on my good colleague of the committee, Mr. Reyes, for the rest of my time in his?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Haslem Wesson. Colleagues, we have all had experiences when we have a development project and we look at the 1 percent art fee. We sometimes scratch our heads and say, well, why can't I do it this way? Well, why don't I look at this particular project and program? We've always had very strict rules based on ordinances that we have authored. Now, I want to thank the city attorney because we have the ability to create some flexibility in which we could focus on the interpretation of art such that we can perhaps drive resources to art centers that create art. Now, my question to you, Madam Attorney, and I want to thank the director and our CLA CAO. When we look at the application of this resource, can we use this resource in any building?
Yes. Good afternoon, Basha Jankowski, representing the City Attorney's Office. My office looked at the motion, and we've concluded that the ordinance does not require an amendment to achieve the purpose you seek. The expanding use of funds to include the support for the Department of Cultural Affairs managed art centers can be done. The text of the Code 19.85 and 19.85.5 of the Administrative Code enabled the department to use them for onsite salaries for facilities and also salaries which provide art services to the public. Since the ordinance already earmarks 0.18 percent of the 1 percent fee for the department's administrative costs, the remainder of the 1 percent could only be used for onsite staff of the facilities. However, the ordinance requires that guidelines and procedures reflecting the use of the fees for this purpose be adopted by the Department of Cultural Affairs commissioners and then also subject to review and approval by both the mayor and the city of council. So once the commission adopts those guidelines and procedures, it would come to you for your approval.
Director Gaddai, first want to thank you for your stewardship, your tenacity, and your intestinal fortitude in this process. But looking at the opportunity that we have before us, do you see this resource base coming to your assistance, and how quick would you need the turnaround? And is there any special actions we can take as a council? And I open the question to the city attorney, so that resource can get to the centers as soon as possible.
Thank you. I want to thank the Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee for this leadership. Since I got to the city in 2007, I've been looking at ways that the department can better utilize the few sources of public funding that come to us, to use those funds more strategically to better serve our diverse communities and to really make the arts a part of every Angelino's life. So this particular strategy that the committee has come up with is one that will, in the short run, hopefully over a 24-month period, provide the flexibility the department needs to keep these art centers and theaters running while we devise a longer-term strategy that could include public-private operations. But while we seek those operators, viable ones with capacity to run our centers in the manner that Angelinos should expect, we need a life source, a little bit of money, so that we can keep these programs alive and opening. And this money, which has to date been used primarily for hard art, object-based work, which of course does give commissioning opportunities to artists, so we want to retain that function as well. But in addition to commissioning new work so that it improves the visual landscape of our city, we also should be able to use this money to help those centers survive and for other programs and services that the department carries out.
So to be very specific, this action, I would keep my fingers crossed that it passes, does it give you the level of support so that our art centers can continue performing, knowing that that fund is on the horizon?
We are very hopeful that there is enough money that is not restricted. We have to be very careful because the money is generated both by city support for buildings as well as bonds. And so we have to be very careful that we follow strictly the rules of bond issues. But the money, according to the city attorney, that is generated by the city is in the purview of this council and of the department to use it in the manner that you're proposing.
So this fund could be used in any program, even though it's not constructed by the city? Let's say facility is not a library, or it's not a youth center that the city constructed. Let's say it's another building not constructed by the city. Can we still use this fund? I want to be very clear about that.
I'm sorry. I believe when I looked at it, this is for Department of Cultural Affairs managed art centers. That's what we were looking at. I believe there are, how many? 30? About, yeah, almost 30. 30 centers that the department manages, and the funds that we're talking about would be used by the department for onsite staff and teachers, not for any, and not for any facility in the city.
No, no, no. I'm saying it is a department-managed program. It is. But let's say that department-managed program is at the Boys and Girls Club, and that building is not constructed by the city. Do we have that flexibility?
No. The commissioning is of city cultural facilities. That's what the ordinance talks about, city cultural facilities and services. So the limitation of the money to be used for it would be at city-owned art facilities, theaters, city-owned, where we have onsite staff.
So colleagues, this is, I think, another layer of issues that can potentially arise in the future. What I'm hoping we could do is move forward on this action, and then perhaps, Mr. Chair of the committee, if we can look at what language we need, should we want that flexibility as policymakers? And that is a layer of work that I feel we need to engage, because there could very well be a part of our city where the city did not invest in that community. There is no city facility, but let's say the council member wants an art center and needs those resources, but it's not their fault that they don't have a city facility. But they want the program that's administered by the department, and that's the gap I think we need to fill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Your time is up on that. If you'd like to punch a bunch again, Mr.?
Can I just answer him real quick to what we have here? We're looking at a 24-month operation here to get through this period. But in that time too, Mr. Reyes, if you identified, let's say, the River Center within that complex to find an art facility within it, certainly would support that. But this is a 24-month of existing facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. And that was shared time, right? That was quite a bit of time there, so it was shared time between two councilors. I hope I'm offered the same courtesy. Okay. Thank you. I just want to understand this. Right now, this fund, the Public Works Improvements Art Program, that is for both private and public projects?
No.
No. Okay. Which ones?
You want me to just briefly? The Department of Cultural Affairs gets 1 percent of all public facilities built in the City of Los Angeles, so the fire stations, the public, the police stations, animal shelters, et cetera, et cetera. Similarly, we get 1 percent of private development, but we're not talking about that program. It's got many more strings attached to it. So right now, we're concentrated on the public percent for art. Up to now, since the beginning of the program, typically those funds have been used to buy two-dimensional and three-dimensional objects that beautify that facility. However, the way that the ordinance is worded, that's not the only use that those monies can be applied to. And so what we're saying is, give us a 24-month win- And so, what we're saying is, give us a 24-month window so that we can use, with your blessing, those funds to help sustain the art centers and theaters that currently the department manages while we're looking for public-private enterprises.
So, this will only be for 24 months?
This particular motion is, would be sunset in 24 months, correct?
Is that accurate?
If that's what you wish.
But it's not, that we're voting on today is not 24 months?
Well, this flexibility is going to be promulgated by the department and approved by the commission and subject to review and approval by the mayor and this body--
Okay.
--as to the administration of the program, which would include funding onsite staff for these facilities.
Would this come back for council? At what point do we finalize the final, today we're approving their motion, at what point do we approve the guidelines that would include the 24-month?
As soon as they're promulgated and adopted by the commission, then they come for review and approval to the mayor and to this body. So, you could do it for however long time you want--
And when would that happen? When would you bring those to council?
It'll probably take a few weeks to--
Few weeks, okay. Now, sounds good. We need to support some art centers that are on the brink of closing, and we have no solution. This gives us a window to keep them going for some time. But it's also shifting of funds. There's some public projects that will lose out on an arts component, and let's face it, I mean, some of these art projects at these public buildings do a great job to, you know, help support the arts and beautify a community and bring arts to some communities that don't have any public art.
Yes.
And the only thing I point to sometimes is a new public project that brings public art to those communities. So, I'm a bit concerned about that, and I do think we need to find a long-term solution to operational dollars when in fact we're getting this money for a particular public project. So, I look forward to receiving those guidelines. They are going to come back to us in a couple of weeks--
Absolutely.
And you're going to have a 24-month portion there just to give us some reading space.
That's what the committee is recommending, yeah.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Alakon.
Members, this is a very interesting proposal, because I was actually here when we created the 1% fee, and it was the arts community that asked us to stop building buildings that aren't culturally significant and impose a 1% development fee so that we could ensure that whatever building was being built would have a prominent artistic feature to it. There was some discussion about that money should go into a fund such as the one being proposed, quite frankly, and the arts community didn't want that. They wanted the buildings to-- I believe there were some options, that if there were community participation, the developer could do different things, but it had to be for arts structures. It wasn't for service provision. So, I'm very curious how the arts community as a whole might react to this, particularly those who absolutely believe that the developments have to have, particularly public buildings, have to have some arts features. So, number one, I can appreciate the flexibility here. In fact, we negotiated an agreement with Price-Fister on a Costco-Best Buy development out there, and we in fact have an arts fund that we can do different things with in the community. So, I appreciate the flexibility, but I don't want to lose the entire, I don't want to lose the entire arts requirement incorporated into development of a building. And in some cases, I may want to make sure we use all the 1%. So, that's one of my concerns. My second concern is I don't have any art centers. I have a lot of arts programs, but I don't have any art centers whatsoever. So, this is absolutely a slight on the northeast San Fernando Valley, which doesn't have any buildings that it can contribute to. So, I can't vote for an ordinance that boxes out my district. I'm sure there's other districts. Maybe there are, maybe there aren't. Maybe I'm the only one that doesn't have an art center, but--
Can it be used?
I certainly, no, it can't, because it has to be for existing facilities. It can't be used for, to build a center in my district. I would love to have more flexibility that says that I can use it for, how about even where you don't have an arts facility, you can use it for arts projects or services that the city offers through nonprofit corporations or through other means. So, I'm not ready to support this as it goes to, in its final form here. I won't vote against it to allow it to go, but I absolutely want to see those concerns addressed. I just don't think that would be fair to the people that don't have art centers in their community.
I totally agree with both of your comments, Mr. Alakon. Number one, I think that it is imperative not to rob Peter to pay Paul, and that's essentially what we're doing. It's an emergency measure, however, because right now, we're trying to sustain these cultural centers and theaters that are the lifeblood of many communities. So, I'm going to be very hawkish in making sure that not all of that money goes towards this purpose, that the primary purpose of the money is to include cultural and artistic elements into the buildings that this city will be known for for centuries to come. So, I absolutely agree with that analysis. I also agree with your analysis that we should strive not to make this available only to DCA-administered cultural centers. There are many service providers and many opportunities throughout this huge city that we can partner with, and they're not always housed at our own centers. So, I also agree that the more flexibility that you can provide the department to be able to partner with viable arts organizations throughout the city, especially in districts that don't have the ability to have a center of their own, the better, because we want to have arts infuse every community, whether they have a standalone center or not. By the way, Mr. Smith doesn't have a center in his community either, so you're not the only one. So, I think he would agree that if we can use dollars that exist already to better work in your community and in his community, that we'll all be better off for it. So, I would encourage us as we move forward to build that kind of flexibility in.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I have the Madrid Theater, and I also have the Art Center in Canoga Park. And they both receive notice that they're going to be shutting down operations. I'm getting a lot of emails. Everybody's upset. The fact of the matter is, these dollars will save both of those operations?
Yeah, well, they will, what is being envisioned now by the committee is that these dollars will provide a bridge, thank you very much, a bridge until private enterprise can come in and partner with us. In the case of the Madrid, for example, the Golden Performance Association, which is our primary tenant there, has already contacted me and said, "We're interested in forming a partnership with you." In the case of Canoga Park, we're going to retain that center. It's a Prop K facility. What happened in that center is that we had to let go of one of the artist instructors because he was on the layoff list.
Right.
So, hopefully, this money will allow us to hire him back on a contract basis or to provide a way to plug that hole that we were mandated to--
Right. No, I understand. I'm not criticizing because I know the mandate came down. These people losing their jobs.
Right.
The issue is, for me, obviously, to keep those facilities open.
Correct.
I know Ms. Haunt came up with some dollars someplace to keep something in the harbor open. How much money do we have available, citywide?
We don't know, because a lot of these dollars that we're talking about are bond money, so we have to really go in there and analyze. Now, the CIO has said to me just now that some of these funds have been in kiddies for a long time and might be available sooner rather than later, but our public art director is coming up with a dollar amount and that doesn't have restrictions tied to it.
But no, we talked about, we talk about the dollars that are, we talk, 24-month period to keep this moving. Do we have millions, or do we have--
I don't want to say right now, but we're hopeful that we have about, at least half a million.
Okay. So, we got substantial amounts that we'll be able to--
Yeah.
And is it generated citywide, some of these council offices, the council districts don't have these facilities, others do. I'm fortunate to have two. Does the money go to a specific area, or is it a citywide pot that we're going to be drawn from?
Right now, it would be a citywide pot.
Okay.
I don't think there are any restrictions in the ordinance, and unless the guideline, the procedures and the guidelines have a restriction, I believe the department can spend it where it's needed.
So, basically, we would take care of those that are in operation, but we wouldn't be able to establish any more--
Correct.
--what we've got standing is what we're going to fund to hopefully keep alive for 24 months, and hopefully some light will come at the end of that tunnel.
But my hope as we move forward is to get these dollars out to these facilities now, but use this as a window of opportunity--
Right.
--to look at how we can better spend that money, and that might mean a change in the ordinance so that people whose districts do not have a center can also benefit from these dollars that are generated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes, for a second time.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. I, Council President, I, just in conclusion, I hope you can sense this is an attempt to be creative in what we have--
Right.
--not to lose the integrity of the original ordinance. Just want to maintain that integrity--
Correct.
--but give us the capacity to move in an emergency manner to stop this ship from sinking--
Yes.
--which many centers are about to close.
Correct.
We heard that in committee over and over again. Personnel might be lost. So, this gives us some life, allows us to move forward, and I commit to you on the report back that says, "Request the City Attorney to report on the feasibility of a many Los Angeles Administrative Code sections relative to the Public Works Improvement Program. Expand the use of the funds to include support for art centers and programs throughout the city. Like to make a friendly verbal amendment that we also come back with language that gives us the flexibility to apply this strategy in non-city-owned facilities." So, that way it happens simultaneously. And I agree with Councilmember LeBange. Let's keep this in a 24-month sunset to assess its impact, and then come up with other approaches if needed. But at least this gives us a lifeline on the short term.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, Councilman Reyes, you would like to amend the ordinance in that case to include these new uses for the funds?
Right. If it's going to hold us back, then I'd rather get this done first and then proceed with that.
Well, amending the ordinance will take longer than the promulgation of the guidelines that I mentioned--
Then let's do it in phases.
--in stages, okay?
We'll take care of the first phase to address the emergency situation, and then from there, come back with language that allows us to take another action for that ordinance to be altered to fit the needs of those districts that don't have a center.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. For the first time, Mr. Corian.
My question's been answered. Thank you.
Question's been answered. Mr. LeBange, second time.
So, members, I think we all have a consensus. This is a 24-month bridge. We're all looking for options. Mr. Weston was very good in his concepts and ideas. Mr. Reyes, the maker of the motion, all of us together. The old phrase which Ms. Garay used, "Robbing Peter to pay Paul," you know where that came from?
The Bible?
Well, I don't think it came from the Bible, but it's pretty close. It was St. Peter's Cathedral, they robbed St. Peter's Cathedral, paid for St. Paul's Cathedral.
Ah.
Okay, so that's two great institutions, and that's happened four centuries ago. This is a 24-month period that we're going to look at this, and I do respect what Mr. Alakon said, but other options to look at other buildings, working with Recreation and Parks, your Arts and Parks Committee is trying to find solutions for the immediate problems right now. And we were really upset that centers were going to be closed, because there were no option given to the general manager. Mr. Reyes and myself, Mr. Weston, in this discussion, came up with this idea. This idea will get us to this next point. And then, Mr. Reyes made even a greater idea, Madam City Attorney, that we'll consider through the process of future months and years to try to create art centers in other facilities, whether it's boys' clubs, YMCA's, PAL organization, whatever it would be. So, this gives us an opportunity. This is what we're charged with as a committee to try to come to you with solutions. We hope for an "I" vote all the way around and get back to this, have this effective by July 1st so we could keep these things open right now, and the 24-month window. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. One final question, and I just want to see if this is workable. The 1% is given out on new projects, so in that 24-hour period, how many new projects are there?
24 months.
Pardon me?
24-month period.
Yeah, but how many new projects are going to happen in that 24-month period such that you get that 1%? And how much money is that?
That's what we're trying to come up with right now, is a clear audit of what exactly is on the books that hasn't already been--
Exactly, yeah.
And we've, from a very rough conversation we had yesterday with our Director of Public Art, she thinks that there's going to be about a half a million dollars available.
Okay. Can you bring that information back when you bring the guidelines?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We'd like to see which projects--
Absolutely.
--are going to lose out on their public art and how much money we're talking about so that we see very clearly what the trade-offs are in our decision. Should we move forward? Because there's a motion to direct to get back those guidelines, right?
Right.
So, when we get those back, should we move forward at that time? We want to see what the trade-offs in very clear--
Absolutely, thank you.
And that would also affect any buildings in the future in this period that are going to be built, but we don't know what that is at this--
We don't know what that is. Well, one thing is certain. We are no longer doing MICLUS, so we're not voting on any new projects.
Right.
Seems a lot has slowed down, so--
But again, I want to emphasize that I would, as a manager, look not to put 100% of the money into this kitty, but keep a substantive portion of it for its intended purposes, which is to beautify the buildings that we build as--
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. That concludes the queue. Take us to the vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item 61, called Special for--
Work with.
61, called Special for Crabs.
61. Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Serena, also a board member on the LA-32 Neighborhood Council. Kind of wondering, why are you worried about the rollover funds? I thought you had already taken them all away from us already. So, yes, within the fiscal year, maybe we can hold some special meetings and have fewer rollover funds available for your future use, somewhat like this whole situation with the art center. Take money from one place, put it in another, but we don't get any money from the rollover funds. You guys are going to take it. So, we're quite concerned about any sort of suspension of transfers. Why can't we have transfers up until July 30? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. There are no, now, Mr. Corian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to respond briefly to Dr. Williams. The reason for this motion is that the council's previously-approved policy was to transfer 1.6 million dollars in rollover funds to the unallocated, unappropriated balance. One-third would be swept in the first sweep. That has already occurred, and there's now been about $600,000 or so swept. There's another sweep that is due next week, and the reason that we're requesting this delay is that there have been over a million dollars in claims by neighborhood councils submitted against those rollover funds. So, we want the opportunity to have enough time to let the department and our committee sufficiently assess the validity of those claims and reduce the number of, to make sure that we're maximizing the benefit to the general fund while also preserving the legitimate claims that the neighborhood councils may have to those funds pursuant to the previously-approved council policy.
Thank you, Mr. Corian. Seeing you know the speaker's on the queue, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That passes. Next item, please.
Item 57, called Special for Councilmember Perry.
57, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the very thorough discussion we had in the Energy and Environment Committee yesterday, and a number of issues were discussed with respect to the energy cost adjustment factor. We heard from Department of Water and Power-- We heard from Department of Water and Power representatives regarding their proposal, as well as the council's consultants, PA consultants, regarding our options. There are two different proposals, and they have different impacts. As a result, I ask that the matter be continued to next Tuesday in Energy and Environment Committee so that the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer can jointly report and provide us with a clear understanding of the matter and a viable solution in the best interest of the city and its ratepayers. Just to put on the record, this is what we did in committee yesterday, and I wanted to review the recommendations so that you can hear them from me firsthand. We instructed the chief legislative analyst and the chief administrative officer to jointly and immediately report to committee with recommendations to address the pending ECAF matter as it relates to the board's proposal and the PA consultant's proposal. In their recommendations, the two departments should seek to address the following objectives: Maintain the financial stability of the city and the Department of Water and Power. Seek transparency of the energy cost adjustment factor through its potential decoupling of its three main components: the renewable portfolio standard, energy efficiency, and a market-driven ECAF. Seek to develop an ECAF proposal that reduces residential and commercial ratepayer interest below the projected 2.7 cents per kilowatt hour threshold. And seek to provide long-term solutions through a collaborative, integrated resources plan for the renewable portfolio standard and energy efficiency. So we did this without objection, and I was told this morning that the Department of Water Commission had not scheduled a commission meeting, which surprised me very much, given that we had received a letter from the Department of Water and Power stating that their drop-dead date for getting this accomplished was March 31st. And I've tried to be very transparent, I'll continue to do so, and let the process work as well as it possibly can. The DWP put it on the record that this was a time-sensitive matter that requires immediate action, and I believe through the committee process that we were working hard to meet their deadline. I'm not going to ask them to come to the table because I think that we have a way to move forward on this, and I don't want to waste time with that. So this is what I'm going to recommend. I'm going to ask that we move to reject the board resolution today as a council. Then we'll waive from committee and instruct the CLA and the CAO to report to Energy and Environment on Tuesday with the alternatives that I've outlined in my previous statement. So to review that again, I'm going to ask the council to move to reject the board resolution. Then I'm going to waive this from committee, and then I'm going to ask, as I have, the CLA and the CAO to report to Energy and Environment on Tuesday with alternatives.
Second by Mr. Corinas. Mr. Coretz, for speaker.
Yeah, as I suggested in the committee hearing, I'd like to ask that we add a request directly to the DWP to schedule a special meeting between the time that we have our committee meeting on Tuesday and April 1st, the time by which they would need to act.
Thank you, Ms. Coretz. Ms. Perry, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Okay, fine. Yes.
That's accepted. Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, I had intended to, in fact, I did circulate a motion to accept the board's recommendation to do the .8, but also send a list that you can read off the motion of demands should the department choose, desire to go above the .8, that they have to come back. Things like they have to have a ratepayer advocate in place. They should come back with a plan to ameliorate those businesses that have done a good job with energy efficiency, to perhaps exempt them or to come up with some plan on how to recognize the work that they've done, to protect the low-income folks from further hardship to ask DWP to come back with a plan. There's 13 different recommendations. I can see where this is going, I'm not going to put up a fight where that is necessary. The concern I have is this. On behalf of you as my colleagues, I will vote against this, but I firmly believe that you're going to get, we're going to get to the same place. And that is that we are going to increase the rates by at least .8, and down the road we may increase them by more. I believe the message that we are sending by rejecting DWP's proposal will be a message that we have rejected the rate increases. And there is going to be a lot of mixed messaging amongst the public, thinking that we rejected the rates, and then when they come back and we approve them, they're going to be very angry. I don't think we need to do this. I think we could send this whole thing back to DWP, make the request, we can still 245 at a later time without going up or down, and tell them what our concerns are and order them to come back. In fact, I would move that we request them to have a joint meeting with our energy committee, the board. Let's do it together and work together in the full light of day with the public's view and come together with a proposal. I'm waiting for a second on that one. But in any case, I think the most important thing is that we recognize that our own consultants said that we cannot afford the current rates, that we've got to go to .8 as a minimum, perhaps more. We're going to do that. I think to reject this is going to send the wrong message to the public that we are doing something that eventually we are, that we're not doing something that eventually we're going to do. So I offer my motion for consideration. In any case, I want the motion to go to committee on Tuesday with a list of recommendations, regardless of how we package it. I think these are good recommendations and should be embraced by the DWP, and I hope by you all as well. But with that, I'm just asking you to proceed with caution, and I think that we can get to the same end without sending this mixed message to the public.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a quick question. When we come together on Tuesday, my constituents, over and over and over, are saying to me, "What does .8 mean to me on the bill?" So I'd just like to have clarity on that so I can explain to them what .8 means and those other packages over time, what that will mean. They keep asking me, "How am I going to deal with it and what it is?" So I just want to make sure when we talk about it next Tuesday, they tell us dollars and cents what we're talking about.
That's it. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. And Jan, it was articulated, and I don't want anybody to confuse this, my question for support or that I'm against this. I am leaning away from this. But this, it was my understanding, and if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, that we were going to have this discussion on Tuesday. Then it was articulated to me that because of some legal concerns and legal posting, that we needed to take an official action today. So, Mr. President, I don't know how accurate that is. So before we go forward, I would like to have the city attorney indicate to us if this is, in fact, what we must do.
Would be able to respond on that issue?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to know that I know, because if we're going to come back on Tuesday, I want to make sure it's crystal clear to me that we have to do this, because it doesn't make sense to do this today if we could get some commitment that the board would hear this, which is my understanding that individuals would be supportive of that.
And Mr. Wesson, I'd also like to add, as I talked to our chief legislative analyst and to the city clerk, and I was advised that if I waive it from committee, then that clears the path for the commission to go ahead and schedule their meeting, as to date they had not scheduled it. This is why I did this. I mean...
No, you could be right.
No, I could be right. I actually, I think I am right.
Yeah, but I just need to ask...
There is no reason for them not to put it on the schedule. They're cleared to go.
I just want to have my question answered, where it relates to, must we take action today? And if there's somebody that's saying that that's the case, I want to hear it, because within the next couple of days, who knows where we might be with this? I mean, this is not the mayor's problem, this is not the council's problem, this is not DWP's problem, this is all of our problems. And during serious times like this, it makes sense to me that we try to work together. Now, I know things have been done in the past to try to make this happen. It hasn't to this point. Who knows what will happen over a long weekend? So what I'd like to do is get the city attorney, tell me why we have to take action today, and if the board, even if they're directed by the mayor to meet, could they meet? That is my question.
Good afternoon, Councilman Joe Breivich, Assistant General Counsel for the department. The answer to that question is really found within the Brown Act, and the only thing we need is 24 hours for a special meeting. So that special meeting notice is not conditioned upon a action of this body today.
So, if I may, so are you telling me that the board could meet on, I can't remember what day that it was suggested that they meet, if it was Tuesday or Wednesday? So there could be some commitment, that there would be a meeting on Wednesday where this board would not have to vote to accept or reject today if we chose to?
Commissioner Mathema, I'm sorry, Councilman Mathematically, that is...
I've been called worse than a commission.
Mathematically, that Wednesday scenario is possible, but that causes you other issues with respect to the April 1st implementation.
So what are you saying? Can you do it or not? Because if you can't do it, then there will be a vote today. And I don't think that vote today is going to be the vote you want. So I mean, I always, I think that nobody is creative as attorneys, so I mean, choose your words carefully.
The, in order for the ECAF to be implemented on April 1st, you need a final action of the board that they can be implemented on April 1st. To get to that point, if our board were to act on March 31st, then that matter would come down to council pursuant to the charter under the five-day waiting period. So unless you had a waiver of the 245 jurisdiction at that time, that action would still be subject to the five-day waiting period and therefore would not be a final action within the time period to implement the ECAF.
Jerry, you want to say something?
I think from a timing standpoint, the board is going to either need to meet Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning, and then presuming that the board took the action that the council would recommend Tuesday, the council would have to friendly 245 it on Wednesday so that it could become effective on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Corinas.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. And one thing, two points I'd like to make on my time is, one is, if I heard Paul Coretz correctly, I'll hold that for a minute. But, so technically speaking, who, to the, Joe? Not so lucky. And thank you for all your help. You've been helping clarify a whole lot of things technically about what's going on with this matter. So I want to thank you certainly for that. Who has the authority to call a board meeting of the Department of Water and Power?
The president of, with respect to the special board meeting that would be necessary under this circumstance, because we couldn't have a regular board meeting because those are the first and second Tuesday of every month by the board rules, so we would be operating under a special meeting under the Brown Act. And under that circumstance, the president of the commission has the ability to call the meeting or a majority of the commissioners.
Okay. So either three commissioners combined or the president by his or herself?
That is correct.
Call a special meeting. And what is the amount of time necessary for that, the public to be notified about a special meeting?
The minimum amount of time under the Brown Act is 24 hours for a special meeting.
24 hours. So technically speaking, the president of the board, it's almost 2:30 today on the 26th of March, the president of the DWP board could call a meeting for, say, 3 o'clock on Monday, and they would start that notice, et cetera? They could technically convene a meeting as soon as 3 o'clock on Monday?
Under the Brown Act, correct.
Under the Brown Act.
It's also a holiday on Monday, but that's a different...
But it doesn't preclude them from having a meeting, or does it? The fact that Monday's a holiday?
I would have to double-check under the Brown Act. Dion, do you know that off the top of your head?
I think it's more of a related issue.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Whether, are you requiring city workers to come in on a holiday?
Okay, but I think he was asking not so much about the city worker issue, but could a meeting be called on a holiday? I think that, Joe, was that...
Yeah, that was it. I don't think there's any prohibition in the Brown Act.
So, yeah, mathematically, yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't be a legal issue, it'd just be a functionality issue as far as getting the workers to come in, et cetera? Okay. Is Paul Coretz around? Okay. Let's carry him a word time. Well, when Mr. Coretz comes back on the floor, I was thinking, I was wondering if Mr. Coretz meant earlier, when he said that between our meeting on Tuesday and April 1st, he was speaking toward the Department of Water and Power, Mr. Coretz, would it be accurate to say that between this meeting we're having right now and April 1st are the matters that you were trying to refer to?
Yeah, I didn't intend to imply it couldn't be done sooner. I just thought it wouldn't be able to be done on a holiday, but if it could, I certainly wouldn't object. That was my intention, just to do it as soon as possible.
Okay, so that was your intention? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corian.
Yeah, I'm going to pass for now, thank you.
All right. Ms. Perry, you're the last speaker on the queue.
Yeah, I wanted to move the previous question. Can you open the roll on that?
Okay, we have previous questions. There's no objection, there's no speakers on the queue.
On my motion that's pending.
On your motion. Thank you very much. Then that'll be on the Perry motion. If there are any questions?
Yeah, I got a second.
You have a second, yes.
Yes, and I am asking for an I-vote on my motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, colleagues, I know right now there seems, there's been a lot of discussion this week on what is before us. I think, I want to first start by thanking our chairman and the members of our Energy and Environment Committee that have spent a lot of time on this. I don't think there's a single person around this horseshoe who hasn't, but especially for the extra hours that you've put in. I think we've been very clear and we've been very transparent about what we want. We want a process that is as straightforward and as public as possible. We want to know what the plan is for the department, and we have some amazing workers there and some amazing managers there, but we're in a state of flux. We don't have a permanent general manager. We haven't seen the detailed plan for all the clean energy that we want to see happen, but we also want to make sure it happens in a way that we know exactly what we're purchasing so we don't run into the problem we did a few years ago where we empowered the department, but they started buying things in Wyoming and we didn't own it. And we want to do it in a way that builds on what has made this department great, owning and operating our green future, just as we have done it with our brown past. Don't quote me on that one. The problem that we have before us right now is that I think, having talked to this entire council, is folks know that we have to do what's right and what's reasonable. Many of us have talked too many times to too many individuals, and I'm not speaking about individuals from the DWP that are here today. I mean, I don't know you all enough to blame or not to blame, but we have some great people that are here, and I want to be clear about that. But people who are no longer with the department and others have lied to some of us, who've said, "Trust us, it's this, the green power, you can only do with that." They put a gun to our head on rate increases in the past, saying if you're for the environment, you have to vote yes. And right now, we want to be your partners in re-establishing some trust between the people of L.A. and the department. Don't take our word for it. We channel what the people out there are saying. We don't come up with this because it's some sort of political gain. You know, more than anything else we do, we can talk about public safety, we can talk about fire, we can talk about police. People read their bills every single month. DWP touches people in a much more direct way than almost anything else that we do. And so before we say, you know, there isn't a lot that separates, I think, the mayor and the council on this, but process is very important, too. Before we say, "Here's the ceiling, I'm headed to 2.7 and a 40% increase for you," we might say, "One step is appropriate. There's a recession going on, we need to make sure that the department is fiscally sound, we need to make sure that people still get the dividend..." sound, we need to make sure that people still get the dividend of the transfer of a publicly-owned utility, but let's wait on step 2, 3, and 4." I think the department has said, "You will have that power to do that," but all we're saying is, we don't want to approve going all the way there yet, or that that is our stated goal, until we know we are an efficient department, that we are doing a plan, and that we are led by people who we know. So today, the procedural question we have before us is whether or not, if we vote to reject today, we're not saying that we're rejecting the possibility of any increase, we're saying that this package as it is should not move forward today. But then Tuesday, based on what our chairwoman has done a super job of shepherding forward, we asked for a report from PA. PA Consulting gave us that report. It actually did recommend that we should do a .8 increase, and that there will be future increases, but it also said, maybe we haven't looked at all the efficiencies, and we're asking the CLA to have the weekend to actually report on that, the CAO. That's all that we're saying. So we come back here Tuesday, we can still take that responsible step forward towards clean energy, that responsible step forward to keeping a good bond rating, that responsible step forward to making sure that the city's public dividend of a transfer is well-protected, but that we have the weekend to make sure that we then recommend to the board, "Please bring us that back." And I think we can be on the record on Tuesday being for something, we can't force them to do it, but if they are agreeing to meet, and I talked to the board president, there's no reason they can't meet, and they're willing to meet on Tuesday or Wednesday, they can come back, and we can have that done. That's what's before us today. It's my hope that we can work that out, I know that we're, that there's a lot of conversation going on right now, but I would ask if, I don't know if there's anybody else on the queue?
Actually, now that Mr. Weezer, for a first time--
Okay, good.
Ms. Perry, close.
We have a couple more minutes to kind of work out any communication that's going on, and then we'll move forward.
I called the question again.
Okay.
I called the question before, I'm going to do it again.
You called the question. Ms. Perry, I let Mr. Garcetti speak, because he had spoken for a first time, Mr. Weezer is on for a first time as well.
Thank you.
We also have three cards from the public, and the city attorney advises we should do a limited one-minute public hearing, because there's a change from the committee. So, Mr. Weezer, and then we'll do a public hearing, and then Ms. Perry, close.
Okay, great, thank you. And my question is, should we move forward with the motion, and we come back on Tuesday, and are we coming back to the committee or to the full council as the motion is proposed?
To committee, and they'll do the report in committee, and then we will come to council.
So, to committee on Tuesday and to council?
Tuesday.
Same day?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the next step after that?
Well, depends on how people vote.
There is no interim DWP meeting, the commission is out--
Well, it's kind of up to them, it's up to the Department of Water and Power. I've cleared the pathway for them to have a meeting by indicating my willingness to waive from committee, even though we're having a report back in committee. It's already, the agenda's out, it's already on the agenda, so they have no reason, there's no procedural reason why the Department of Water and Power cannot schedule a commission meeting. They're free to go.
And if they do not meet, assuming they do not meet, whatever action we take on that Tuesday is what will stand, and that will give us sufficient time before the April 1st deadline, right?
Or if we're not entirely satisfied with whatever action they take the next day, I'm not sure who indicated, maybe it was the city attorney, I'm not sure, friendly 245, if there's some revision we want to make on that. It doesn't have to be a hostile act, it could be a friendly act.
But there is a possibility that this will not go back to the DWP commission, correct, Mr. City Attorney? Should we come back and act? Can you come up, please, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm just trying to understand, should we move forward, what are the next steps that would get us to some solution, to some decision-making that's going to stand, and everyone will know where we are? So, if we come back on Tuesday, and we vote, let's say we vote some certain direction, a certain package, and the commission had not met, it's final, it's done, there's no other room for the commission to give their say.
That would depend on what the, assuming that the commission has not met before then?
Yes, yes.
Right, so if you were to take a final action on, if you were to take an action on Tuesday, conceivably, they could act on Wednesday as well, given the amount of time that you, you know--
So they could actually go back and meet.
If you can make that 24-hour period, but then you also have to, in order to get to an effective date of April 1st, this council would then have to take further action on that Wednesday--
245.
--as well, to, or waive the 245 under 245B, you have the ability to prospectively waive, so you could do that as well, so you have some options there. Again, it's, the criticality is in the timing and the mechanism.
Okay. Mr. CLA?
Yeah, to be clear, I think the commission is going to need to meet prior to council meeting on Wednesday, so--
On Tuesday, we're going to meet Tuesday.
Correct.
Mr. Weezer, that concludes your time, so, you want to finish your statement?
Mr. Smith, there are several speakers here who spoke much longer than the allotted time, we would ask that you give the same courtesy, and this is my final question, I'm not going to extend any further--
You can press your button again.
Great. Okay, can you answer the question?
Yes, if I could finish the answer. In order for the increase to become effective on April 1st, the council's period to review it under Charter Section 245 needs to have expired. So, the commission is going to need to act before the council meets on Wednesday, so that if the commission does adopt what the council suggests in its meeting on Tuesday, you can then do what's called a friendly 245 on Wednesday, and affirm the commission action.
The bottom line, the commission does not have to meet anymore if we take an action on Tuesday? Or is it required that they--
It is required.
It is required, so there's a further action irrespective of what we do on Tuesday?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
I need to clarify that for Mr. Weezer, though, the commission is not under any affirmative duty to meet right now, so if that's the question, is whether they're under an affirmative duty to meet, there is no requirement for them to meet, so when you say, "Are they required to meet?" There is no legal requirement for them to meet.
But if we take action on Tuesday, do then they have a legal requirement to meet after that?
They do not have a legal obligation to meet, it is a discretionary item.
Got it.
Mr. Parks?
Call the question.
Questions called for, if there's no objections, we'll cease debate. No objections, we do have three speakers from the public, city attorney advises that this is a slight change from the committee action, therefore should be a one-minute public hearing. If there's no objections, you object?
We don't need to vote on it, because there's no objection. You're objecting to call the question, all right. We'll take the public comment cards in, Dr. Williams? One minute.
One minute, okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Bear Road, Elsreno, Northeast LA, DWP liaison for LA 32 Neighborhood Council and Board Member. This is not a new approach. Wait until the very last minute, so you create a crisis environment, so that you can stampede the board and the council all at one time. Bundle it up so that there are so many things into the ECAF that you can avoid responsibility and accountability for rate increases. This is a rate increase, but it's going to become even more of a problem, because it is an unvoted rate increase. Every quarter, they can jack it up without coming back for 245 or anything else. So, unbundle it. That is, have a rate for solar, have a rate for wind, have a rate for coal, have a rate for grid, and then leave the ECAF, which is flexible, for gas, coal, and maybe some grid. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, Mr. Sacks, Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you, and I agree with Dr. Williams, and another emergency action that you've waited around to the final turn, and now you've got to act, another action. But what also was interesting, Councilman Rosendale and Councilman Garcetti both mentioned the rates on the bills, and I believe there was a previous meeting when they talked about a rate increase, when Councilman Zine brought his DWP bill in, and asked that they put a line in to clarify what the rates are for the customers. Where are they on that action? Have they moved on that action? Councilman Zine, have you looked at your bill lately, is it still the same? So, you ask for favors, you ask for something for the public, and they don't act. Now they want a rate increase. Get some quid pro quo here, so that the people will be able to see when they get their rate increase, which undoubtedly they will get, just exactly what they're paying for. And in addition, when you had the budget meeting, somebody mentioned putting a line on the DWP bill about recyclables. Where's that action?
Thank you, and David, is it Eman?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, David Ewing for the Venice Community Coalition. I just have a question that I'd like to leave you with to think over, and that is, David Freeman said that there are going to be tremendous cost savings as a result of the greening of our energy system. And if that's so, and if we have a solid and detailed plan for how we're going to accomplish that, why can't we go and float a bond to pay for this? Why do we have to pay for this through rate increases? Can't we go to the same Wall Street banks that are funding Playa Vista? Let's get Goldman Sachs to put some money in this. That way, people don't get hit all at once with these gigantic rate increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public comment, now we have the motion before us to cease debate. There was an objection, so we will vote on the motion to cease debate. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Okay. Let's try it again. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 4 noes.
That matter passes. That's the end of debate. Now, before us is the original motion by Ms. Perry.
Which is to reject the DWP--
Please, enough, thank you. This is the vote on the motion as amended, as recommended by Ms. Perry. Open the roll.
For the--
Okay. The city attorney wants to explain it?
For--
No.
No.
Let the city attorney, let the city clerk--
For the record, it is to move to reject the DWP board resolution today with CLA and CAO to report back to the Energy and Environment Committee next Tuesday, with a placeholder for the item in council on Tuesday. 10 votes are required.
Okay. Okay, let's try it again. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
That passes. Next item.
Do you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular meeting?
Yes, we do.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Are there any announcements, ladies and gentlemen? Any announcements? Adjourning motions? One announcement, Mr. Cardenas.
To, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. In light of all of this energy in the room, I'd just like to announce something wonderful, beautiful, and positive. Yolanda Fuentes Miranda, this morning at 9:45 a.m., had a baby. Her and her husband Luis Miranda, the proud parents of Luis Felipe Miranda Fuentes. Yolanda Fuentes used to work for me, she was a Board of Public Works Commissioner, she now works as the Director of the Valley for the Mayor, and I just wanted to share that with all of the city family and all those who care about her, and everybody's healthy and happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Smith, for your district, as well as throughout the city and the Southwest, the wildflowers are absolutely in bloom. If you get an opportunity, go take a hike, whether it's in the Ballwood Hills, Santa Monica Mountains, anywhere in the Angeles National Forest, you'll see the flowers have come back. Thank you, take a hike.
And the magnificent trees out at Lake Balboa, the cherry blossoms.
That's right, they're in, right.
Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to advise the public that MTA will have its final two meetings regarding the Crenshaw LAX Transit Quarter. They will be on Saturday, March 27th, regarding the Crenshaw MLK, the Crenshaw Vernon and the Crenshaw Slauson Station, and then on Wednesday, March 31st, they will have their meeting regarding the Expo Crenshaw Line. The meeting on Wednesday is 8:00 p.m. at the Lula Washington Dance Studio. The meeting on Saturday, March 27th, is at the Good Shepherd Episcopal Church on West Vernon.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
The event tomorrow, 8:00 a.m., Woodland Hills Coalition, will do a tree planting ceremony along Ventura Boulevard. Publics welcome to join, it's going to be Ventura Boulevard between Canoga and DeSoto, starting at 8:00 in the morning. We are going to meet at the Holiday Inn on Ventura Boulevard in Woodland Hills. Publics invited to join us in that tree planting ceremony, we do that all along Ventura Boulevard, we'll start the first phase tomorrow. Also, 11:30 tomorrow, One Generation Senior Symposium, seniors are all invited, that starts 11:30 at the One Generation Center on Victory Boulevard in Reseda, basically Victory Boulevard and Reseda Boulevard. And also tomorrow at 12:30, the Second Annual Open House, Topanga Community Police Station, actually it starts at 10:00, 10:00 to 3:00, Topanga Station, the new Topanga Station in Canoga Park, they're having an open house, everyone's invited, come by, meet your police officers, senior leads, et cetera. And that is it.
Thank you, sir. Any other announcements? Seeing none, there are adjourning motions. Please, with all persons in the audience, everyone please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I--
Quid pro quo, please.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of longtime resident Mitch Costanza, who died earlier this week in San Diego of cancer surrounded by her family and friends. When she was five years old, her family moved to Rochester, New York. She managed a senatorial campaign in Monroe County for the late Senator Robert Kennedy, and in 1973, she became the first woman elected to the Rochester City Council and was appointed vice mayor. In 1977, Mitch was appointed by President Carter to the position of public liaison, making her the first woman to hold such an office. While she was in the White House, she pushed the president on a number of issues, most notably abortion rights. Mitch later became Executive Director of her friend Shirley MacLaine's Higher Self Seminars after moving to LA, later became Vice President of Allen Lansberg Productions, where she made commercial films and advertisements. She served on many service groups, Board of Directors, including the AIDS Research Organization's Search Alliance, and the National Gay Rights Advocates. She was a longtime champion of choice and feminism, and devoted her life to fighting for women's rights, LGBT equality, and abortion rights. She made a big impact in her life and will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Mr.--
Her roots and I go back to Bobby Kennedy, and also to the Carter administration and their White House, and it's an honor to second that motion.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I'm going to begin, and then Mr. Garcetti will complete this. Sergeant Major Robert J. Cottle, also known as RJ, LAPD SWAT officer, Sergeant Major in the United States Marine Corps, Reserve Battalion, killed in line of duty while serving in Afghanistan. First Los Angeles Police Service, he was to be killed in the Iraq-Afghanistan War. Friends and family were planning a homecoming for him, he's due back May. His wife Emily is a naval officer stationed in Hawaii with their daughter, Kayla Jane. Longtime couple, lived in Nueva Linda, married approximately one year ago. Mr. Garcetti will continue.
I just want to say at the outset how many, as we saw here when we had the Chairman and the Joint Chiefs of Staff here, we saw so many men and women from LAPD that serve as Marines and as members of our armed services, in the Army, in the Navy, in the Air Force, in the Guard, and the Coast Guard. Many times, that double duty, the few weekends that they have off, they're putting on another uniform, and then, as so many people in the reserve components have been, they're being called up, whether it's in the Horn of Africa, whether it's in Iraq, or whether it's in Afghanistan. So when we remember RJ, he is somebody who has so many other brothers and sisters that are in the police department, and sometimes other city employees, fire department, elsewhere. RJ enlisted the Marines at 18, and was sent on active duty to Africa and Germany and Hawaii. He decided, though, after seven years of service in the Marines, he wanted to become a police officer, but continued his Marine service in the reserve component when he entered LAPD Academy in 1990. His incredible training in the Marines helped qualify him to become a member of the elite SWAT unit six years later, and he rose to become an assistant team leader. In November 2008, he spoke at a Veterans Day observance program that was hosted by the city of Placentia, and he presented Mayor Scott Nelson with an American flag that was flown during a tour of duty that he had in Afghanistan. This was not his first deployment--
flown during a tour of duty that he had in Afghanistan, this was not his first deployment, even as a reservist. Our chief, Charlie Beck, said, "This deeply saddens me, especially because I've known RJ for over 20 years, he's a fine man, and a great example of the best LAPD has to offer, he will be missed." So on behalf of an entire city, on behalf of an entire grateful nation, we mourn the loss of RJ, may he rest in peace, and may his wife and his nine-year-old child...
Nine-month-old.
Nine-month, oh, sorry, did I say nine-year, nine-month-old, be always a part of our family, because they will be forever, all members of it.
And in that roadside bomb, along with RJ, another Marine died, Marine Lance Corporal Rick J. Santani, who entered the Marines just weeks out of high school in 2008, was in a vehicle that was destroyed by an improvised explosive device, said his father, John Santani, a sergeant in charge of investigations for the Santa Ana Police Department Gang Unit, may he rest in peace, both of these brave soldiers, may they rest in peace.
Mr. Alakon?
I have an announcement.
Are we finished with the adjourning motions?
No, not yet.
Ms. Alabong?
I just wanted to say, in the news reports, in the element of tragedy that affected these, one great Los Angeles Police Officer, one young recent high school graduate, both from New Orbelinda, both from Southern California, and their parents who spoke so eloquently and sadly of their loss, but know what their sons and commitment were, which speaks to the United States Marines and their dedication, so I hope, if it hasn't been done, Mr. President, if you could have the flags at half-staff, if it hasn't been done, but it certainly should be someone, it already is, thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Ms. Alabong, Ms. Rosendahl?
Yes, Mr. President, I rise to adjourn in memory of Donald Eugene Fawcett, was a longtime Brentwood resident and retired advertising creative director who came to California in 1949. Over his 40-year career, he was a copywriter, an art director, creative director at numbers of prestigious ad agencies in New York and Los Angeles, including Young and Rubicon, Ted Bates, Leo Burnett, and among his clients were such powerhouses as Sony, Pioneer, Gallo, Uzakraft, and McDonald's. In World War II, he served with the Military Tribunal Guard at the Nuremberg Nazi War Trials from 1946 through 1947. Don was a longtime member of the ACLU, the NRDC, the Sierra Club Plant Parenthood, and the World Wildlife Foundation. Central to his social activism was his 35 years involvement with the US Service or Service Peace Builders, and past president of the Service International, which contributed to a very rich 84 years of life. Don is survived by his loving wife Adeline Loner, stepdaughter Maureen Kate Loner, sister Claire Martin and her husband Tom Martin, nieces Laura Martin and Rochelle Longo, and nephew Bradley Martin, and many cousins and loving friends. Don will have a small private burial with full military honors at the Riverside National Cemetery. May he rest in peace.
If there are no other adjourning motions, Mr. Alakon for last announcement?
As members, I was not ready to make this announcement, but we recognize Cecil Chavez this Monday with a holiday, his birthday being March 31st, it is a day of service when the legislation that was passed, when several of us were up in the legislature, called on Californians not to recognize him with a day off, but to recognize him by providing service to your community, and so we would ask everybody to do that. I would also mention that on this Sunday, March 28th, at 11:00 a.m., there will be a march in Cecil Chavez honor, this is, I believe, the 20th or so march, and since they're not going to have one in the downtown area, this will be the only march in the city of Los Angeles, so a lot of, there'll be a lot more concentration of energy than in past years. So I would encourage people who want to celebrate this day and recognize the tremendous service this great man gave to us, and would like to come out, come out to Brand Park across the street from the San Fernando Mission, at 15174 San Fernando Mission Boulevard, and please remember again, on Monday, don't just take a holiday, take a service day.
Thank you, Ms. Alakon, that concludes today's business with the clerk of the roll. Meeting is adjourned, have a great three-day holiday, with council next meeting session next Tuesday.